Good evening. Welcome to the May 8, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Vince Messina from Woodside Bible Chirps lead us in the invocation. Please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, Vince.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city officials. Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. We thank you again for the measure of health that is ours by your grace. We thank you for the opportunity this evening for this council to be able to interact in the many different issues and business things that need to be cared for. Father, we pray for your wisdom. We pray for your discernment and knowledge. We pray that all these transactions would happen, Father, in a way that would be appropriate. And Father, we thank you also for the leadership that this council provides to our great city of Troy. Thank you again for our police department, our first responders, our firefighters, Father, for all that they do to protect this city and the citizens of it. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vince. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call is Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderek.
Here.
Councilmember McCown.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
All present, our first order of business is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have three certificates this evening. C1 is a proclamation celebrating A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons Funeral Home, 100 years in business. And I would like to present a proclamation to Terry, Betty, Kevin, and Margaret Desmond. If they would meet me at the podium, I would be honored to make this presentation. One hundred years, what in a great achievement. On behalf of the Troy City Council and the citizens of Troy, it's my honor to present a proclamation to celebrate A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons Funeral Home, 100 years in business. There's not any of us that are...
I hope nobody thinks I was there a hundred years ago.
I know, but we look good for a hundred years. But it's my honor and a privilege to present this proclamation. I'd like to read it into the record if I could. Whereas, the roots of A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons go back to 1917 on Woodward Avenue in Highland Park, Michigan, when Agnes McGinnis...
Angus.
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 Angus. Please correct me as I go along. J. McGinnis founded the A.J. McGinnis Funeral Home. Albert J. Desmond joined Mr. McGinnis in 1930. And then he and Miss Angus Junior, also known as Stuffy, right?
Right.
Took over management of the firm upon Mr. McGinnis' death, and they became known as McGinnis Desmond Funeral Homes and Directors. And whereas the next generation of Desmond entered funeral service when two of Albert's sons, Terrence and John, joined McGinnis Desmond in the 1960s. In 1973, the firm became A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons Funeral Directors when it established a premier location in Troy. And whereas the Highland Park location was closed in 1984, Al's daughter, Joan Desmond, joined her father and brothers in the 1980s. Since 1990, Terry's daughter, Kathy Desmond Barr, has been with the firm, becoming a third-generation family funeral director. In 2008, Terry's son Kevin joined the family business and became licensed. While both John and Joan pursued other career opportunities in the 1990s, John has returned to A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons and is again providing outstanding service to the families. Through the years, several other Desmond family members have been involved. Today, Margaret Desmond and Eileen Desmond contribute much to the firm. And whereas in 1991, A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons again expanded by merging with the well-established firm Fejou Rogers and Canal Funeral Home in Royal Oak. In April of 2015, A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons expanded east with the purchase of Price Funeral Home on Rochester Road in Troy. Founded in 1956 by William H. Price, from 1931 to 2010, the firm most recently has been owned and operated by his wife Suzanne. And whereas today, A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons provides families with three convenient Oakland County locations, serving over 1,000 families annually, their dedicated staff assists each family very personally while honoring their loved ones' life. To continually improve, they all participate in ongoing educational programs, and several staff have achieved advanced professional recognition. Together, their licensed funeral directors have provided over 300 years of outstanding service. And whereas A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons has frequently received the highest awards in the Pursuit of Excellence Program sponsored by the National Funeral Directors Association, and in 2005 achieved the Pursuit of Excellence Crystal Eagle Award, one of only three firms in the nation to be recognized. In 2006, they became a charter inductee of the NFDA Hall of Excellence and continue to be recognized annually. So now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy hereby congratulate Terry Desmond and A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons Funeral Home on their 100th anniversary in the business. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city council and city management join the citizens of this community in celebration of the 100th anniversary of A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons Funeral Home and look forward to being part of Troy for many more years to come, offering traditional funeral services, cremations, and memorial services, as well as everything else that the city needs, right? Including support groups and seminars. So presented this 8th day of May 2017, it's signed by myself. All members of City Council, congratulations to A.J. Desmond &amp; Sons. Thank you for being part of our community for so long and a hundred years. Congratulations to you. Thank you so much.
Mayor told me I could take 20 hours, but I'll probably take about 20 seconds. Simply to thank the city, this has been a wonderful place to do business in. We've been here, as the mayor said, 44 years. We showed our enthusiasm and appreciation of the city by acquiring the Price Funeral Home two years ago. And this is, our relationship with Troy has been nothing but outstanding. So I want to thank you for the proclamation and the council, and also to thank all of you for the wonderful service that you provide our city. From the very time we came to Troy, a little bit of a zoning battle, but from the very time we came to Troy until now, I would say that the leadership in the city has been outstanding, and you're all to be commended. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is C2, which is a proclamation for National Association of Letter Carriers, 25th Annual Food Drive Day on May 8, 2017. And I'd like to make this presentation to James Hunter, Branch 3126 Food Drive Coordinator, and Alex Viviano, Troy Food Coordinator. If they could come forward, I'd like to make this presentation. On behalf of the Troy City Council and the city of Troy, I'd like to present this proclamation, National Association of Letter Carriers, 25th Annual Food Drive Day, May 8, 2017. And if I could, I'd like to read this into the record for you. Whereas, America's Second Harvest reports that 50 million Americans, approximately one in six, are hungry or at risk of hunger, and 37 million Americans receive emergency food assistance from large and small food banks across the nation. And whereas, 17 million children, approximately one in five, and nine million seniors who live in the United States at a poverty level, receive food assistance. One in four people in a soup kitchen line is a child. And whereas, poverty adversely affects birth weight, abuse, and neglect, education, and the general health of our most precious resource, our children, and also affects our senior citizens. And whereas, the National Association of Letter Carriers, NALC, in conjunction with United States Postal Service, UPS, is sponsoring the 25th Annual NALC National Food Drive to Stamp Out Hunger on Saturday, May 13, 2017. And whereas, NALC Branch 3126 in the city of Troy is participating in the National Food Drive, the largest one-day food drive in the nation, because the cost of inaction is too high, particularly in a face of negative outcomes of our children and community, which are so preventable. And whereas, more than 1,400 branches, local branches, of the 300,000-member postal union collected a record 80 million pounds of food in the last year's drive for local food banks, pantries, and shelters, helping families throughout the nation. More than 1.5 billion pounds of food has been donated through the quarter-century history of the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive today. So now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy hereby proclaim Saturday, May 13, 2017, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the city of Troy, and celebrate the 25 years of generosity and community support. And be it further resolved that we invite all Troy residents to leave non-perishable food at their mailboxes on Saturday, May 13, 2017, to support our local letter carriers in their 25th Annual Food Drive to help alleviate hunger in our community and throughout the nation. Presented this 8th day of May 2017, signed by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations to you for all you do for our community. Congratulations, and thank you for what you do. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Hello. Good evening, folks. My name's James Hunter. I'm the regional coordinator also for the state of Michigan, and I just want to give you some quick figures really quick for the city of Troy. Last year, in the city of Troy, the citizens here collected 22,578 pounds of food on that one day. So I'd like to thank the citizens of Troy, Mr. Mayor, and the city council for the support of the food drive. And at this time, we'd like to present the city with this 25th anniversary poster, and it has all the, a lot of the cartoons for the last previous years, and we'd just like to thank you for your support.
Yes. My name is Alex Viviano. I am a letter carrier here in Troy. I am the local food drive coordinator for our office. I perhaps maybe have seen some of you around delivering the mail and stuff like that. I appreciate everything the city does for our food drive. We're one of the biggest, largest food drives around, and we're 25 years strong, and we want to go another 25 years and possibly 100 years. And I appreciate everything my patrons do in my city for the food drive. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is C3, a proclamation acknowledging May 2017 as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I'd like to make a presentation to Suzanne Weinart, Oakland County Community Health Network Representative. Good evening. Hi Suzanne. How are you? Suzanne, on behalf of the Troy City Council and the citizens of Troy, I'd like to present this proclamation, Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2017. Whereas, mental health is important to our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. And whereas, one in five Americans experience a mental health illness that requires treatment at some point in their lives. And whereas, one in 10 children has a serious emotional disturbance that if untreated can lead to school failure, physical illness, substance abuse, jail, and even suicide. And whereas, May 4 has been designated the National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And whereas, the stigma and stereotypes associated with mental illnesses often keep people from seeking treatment that could improve their quality of life. And whereas, mental illness is a biological-based train brain disorder that cannot be overcome through willpower and is not related to a defect in a person's character or intelligence. And whereas, mental health recovery is a journey of healing and transformation, enabling people with a mental illness to live in a community of his or her choice while striving to achieve his or her full potential. And whereas, mental health recovery not only benefits individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life. And whereas, the Oakland County Community Health Network and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. So now therefore be it resolved that the Oakland County Community Health Network and the city council of the city of Troy hereby recognizes May 2017 as Mental Health Month. So be it further resolved that we call upon our citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state of increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for the people with mental illnesses to promote recovery. Presented this 8th day of May 2017, and signed again by myself, all members of City Council. Congratulations, it's our honor to do this proclamation. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say we thank you for your support during this Mental Health Awareness Month, the month of May, but we thank you for your support all year long. We're actually looking forward to becoming residents of Oakland County, or of Troy, as our office is moving to Troy later this summer or early fall. So we're looking forward to being part of the Troy community. Thank you so much.
There are no carryover items this evening, so we will move to public hearings. E1 is an adoption of the 2017-2018 annual and three-year budget with an introduction by Brian Kishnick, City Manager. I will open that public hearing. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're pleased to present this city budget for the next year and then a three-year budget. And when I say "we" are pleased to present, it should be recommended or stated that the staff works very hard on this, and everybody is involved from all the way down in the departments to department heads to the staff in our office, and then the financial ideas team who take two nights to go over it, and then the city council, who you've taken several nights out of your time to go over this budget and listen to presentations. The theme this year was quality of life, and I think we've accomplished that with some of the senior programming that we've added in this. There's still a focus on streets, which we'll continue to do every year, is focus on streets. It's one of our major items that we concentrate on. There are no millage rate increases in this budget, and so it's very sound. The city is in good financial condition. The city has weathered the storm based on the people before, well before me and councils like yourself that have made this job much easier, and to say we're very proud to present this budget.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for staff from council? Mayor Pro Tem Hoderek?
I just want to thank staff and everyone who worked on this. And I think it's important, we start to talk about a lot of specifics that you see in the media, but some key priorities for me that I just want to confirm and have on the meeting record here, I know the answer to this question, but I want it on the record here is, we have a budget here that is based on a millage rate, an overall condensed millage rate that is right and appropriate, and one of the lowest in the area. This budget establishes a fund balance that conservatively reflects and honors our carefully established fund balance level policy. It continues the forward-looking three-year budget and five-year outlook that is lauded by financial experts and municipal finance, including Oakland County, which holds that up as a standard as well. It protects us from the challenges that state revenue sharing and Michigan's municipal financing issues sometimes create for us. It protects an important asset, our AAA bond rating, and it has our backs as council members in terms of our fiduciary responsibility to the people of our city. When you read the budget, you see in our policies, pages eight, nine, 10, 11, that this is, these are the umbrella, I'm just capturing a few of the umbrella thoughts of the overall thinking that goes into this budget. City Manager, I just want to confirm again that that kind of encapsulates our approach, and we can be proud of this budget.
Very much so. Well said.
Thank you. Any comments from council? I will call upon Sunil Shivaraman, who would like to speak on this item. Good evening, Sunil.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, city of Troy. I'm Sunil. I'm Sunil Shivaraman. I'm a proud resident of Troy and a new member of the Troy Historical Society. I mean, I'm here just to say thank you for supporting the Troy Historical Society with this new budget. I'm a new member, so this is the first time I'm reviewing it. There's a lot that goes into creating a balanced and inclusive budget, and so hats off to you, sir, Mr. Kishnick, Mayor Slater, Mayor Pro Tem Hoderek, and the city council. Thank you for creating a very inclusive budget that protects the heritage and the integrity of our society, especially the Troy Historical Society. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Sunil. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? I will close the public hearing and return it to the council table for resolution. Councilwoman Abraham?
I'll move E1, Adoption of the 2017-2018 Annual and Three-Year Budget.
Support.
By Councilwoman Abraham and supported by Councilman McCown, that we approve E1, the adoption of the 2017-2018 Annual and Three-Year Budget. E1, the adoption of the 2017-2018 annual and three-year budget as printed in the agenda packet. One reason that you don't hear a lot of comment on this item is that we've had two study sessions to discuss the budget. At that time, I think everyone felt comfortable that they've asked their questions and addressed concerns. So when you get to this stage, there's a hope anyways that everyone is satisfied with the budget and that we're ready to proceed for 2017. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks again to staff and all the hard work that staff does on the budget. It never gets lost in how difficult it is to put the budget together and keep the city running as it should. Next, we have public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. And we have several residents that have signed up to speak this evening. So before we get to public comment, I would like to read the rules this evening, and please pay attention to the rules that are included in the agenda packet this evening. Hopefully, everyone has picked up an agenda and can review those rules and regulations. But let me summarize those for you this evening. The audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed to the Council rather than to the city administration or the audience. Anyone who wishes to address the Council is required to sign up to speak within 30 minutes before or within 15 minutes of the start of the meeting. There are three public comment portions of the agenda. For items on the agenda, Troy residents and businesses owners are to sign up to address postponed, regular business, consent agenda, or study items, or any other item on the agenda. Troy residents and business owners can sign up to address all other topics under items not on the agenda. All speakers who do not live in the City of Troy or within a Troy business may sign up to speak during the comment on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. Also, there is a timer on the City Council table in front of my podium here that turns yellow when there is one minute of a speaker time remaining and turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting, and please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one group or person. If you do so, then there may be an immediate consequence, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of this meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. I will call upon Joan Donahue, Troy resident that wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Member of Council, I'm Joanne Donahue, and I live over in Charleston Club. And from my den window, I can look down the access road which we enter and exit our complex. I look across Long Lake and over the medium into the designated property. Now, I realize that there's been many comments and discussions, so I won't elaborate on the residents' concerns, but I will say, using just common sense, I cannot believe anybody at all that stands in this location and visualizes a three-story, 500-unit storage facility being squeezed on this small piece of property in an area that is zoned residential in a complicated traffic pattern would have any common sense to feel that this is a satisfactory thing for our city. I thank you, Council and Mayor, for listening to all the concerns of the residents, but I hope you do take your decision very seriously. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I will call on Joseph Donahue, Troy resident that wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening.
Good evening. Joseph Donahue, 152 Charleston Drive. The concept drawings of the self-storage facilities have three violations of the zoning ordinance 5.06. The building height is too high as compared to the other buildings in the M node. The easy storage facility, three stories high, 38 feet, all the other buildings are one-story. The ordinance states that the M node buildings will not be so extreme as to visually overpower the transitional or residential areas. The easy storage would be surrounded on three sides by residential properties. Second, the nodes are intended to be a go-to place that take on a social role, serving both as a place to meet basic needs of the community and as a 21st century village center. The easy storage is intended to serve a larger area over 36 square miles, not one square mile. Number three, the orientation of the building is the largest problem. As per the zoning ordinance, the primary building faca, the front elevation with the entrance, shall be placed away from the residential use. The easy storage facility, as shown on the concept drawings, has a primary faca facing north towards residential properties. The only direction which does not face towards residential property is towards the east. The primary faca must be along a roadway. With the primary faca facing east, it would be along the Ace Hardware Parking Lot. There is no roadway. This location is not suitable for a self-storage facility. The authority and responsibility for the vote on the conditional rezoning is completely the city mayor and council. Only the city mayor and the council will be complicit with the developer as the self-storage facility is built, per the concept drawings, which will violate city ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I will call on Michelle Weber, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michelle Weber. I moved to Michigan 37 years ago. 37 years ago, I moved to Troy. I've lived in three homes in Troy. I've raised my children here, and I've worked in Troy my entire time living in Michigan. I will say, I live in Harrington Park. I totally object to the three-story building. There is nothing else in the area that is three stories. I do understand that a church down on Long Lake in John R. has been denied because their building was too high, and it happens to be about three feet shorter than the storage facility. That I don't understand. If anyone somewhere along the line can help me out with that one, I'd appreciate it. The lighting that will be lit in a neighborhood area for a storage facility is not compliant with the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, if you go out at night, it's relatively dark. And if they say they're going to adjust the lights and make it where it's not, where's the safety feature then? You have people coming in and out of the facility all night long. There needs to be lights to make it secure. So the security of the lights is not compliant with the people who back up their homes, live there. And I just feel, as a resident, I would hope that you would all side with or listen to the residents and not just work with the developers in the area. And that's why you're going to keep good residents in Troy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Lawrence Vail, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening.
Mayor, thank you, City Council. My name's Lawrence Vail. I live at 4873 Heather Brook in the rear of the proposed property. I'd just like to say, I've driven down Long Lake, and I've looked at this, and I've tried to visualize what this monstrosity is going to look like, and it does not fit. It is huge. And I went back into the website of the zoning ordinance for Troy, and I found 5.06, and just, I don't want to get repetitive, but he said, "Variations, however, will respect the adjacent neighborhoods and will not be so extreme as to visually overpower transitional or residential areas." And I think that's the key. It does. This thing is huge. It's not like any other commercial structure in Node M. And I was at the planning meeting two months ago. I didn't think it would pass there, but apparently it did. But there was one city commissioner, Mr. Hudson, who voted no due to the building height and incompatibility with neighboring residential areas. And he went through the nodes step by step, every commercial building there, describing it and saying this was not a good fit. So he saw it, and I think you've got a room full of people that see that, and you're probably going to find out, there's a dozen other reasons why we don't think this is a good idea. So I request that you vote no on changing the code on the property to commercial. Leave it residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Diane Kerr, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Diane Kerr. I live at 187 Harrington Drive in the Harrington Park condominiums, and I oppose the conditional rezoning of property located at 121 West Long Lake Road from residential to commercial for building an easy storage facility. People moved to Troy, as we did 27 years ago, from California because we are currently number three in the state for property values, our schools are nationally ranked, and we are listed as one of the safest cities in America. Self-storage units invite criminal activity, and the fact that this is a drive-through facility hinders observation by both the police and the public to activity within its walls. Some of the criminal activities that I have seen by cruising through the Internet and finding actual newspaper reporting are significant burglar reports due to break-in of the units, storage of stolen goods, storage of illegal drugs, selling of illegal drugs from storage units, illegal drug labs, dead bodies stored in storage units, frozen body parts, storage of explosives and other bomb-making materials, storage of guns and ammunition, people living in storage units, prostitution, storage of flammable materials, storage of toxic chemicals, and people running businesses out of storage units that are using those materials. We have loved working and living in Troy. We raised our families here. Our children live in Troy also, and we thank you for keeping it a safe place for us to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Mark Drazio, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening. I had a presentation, and I showed this at the last meeting, and I just wanted to cover this again. I was showing you the amount of storage facilities we have in the area. That was south of Troy. This is south Rochester Hills. I told you there was like 35 of them. Now, we've got a new one going up here in Rattles, and Rochester Road makes it 36. I showed you the map that was covered if you used the developer's criteria of a three-mile radius, what they plan on grabbing business from. I called for the storage facilities. They all had availability. This has already been covered. This is going to be what I spoke to you about tonight, the core principle I'm here. And I want to tell you that you were elected for three reasons, and that was your core principles, your ethical values, and protecting our citizens' rights. Please don't allow your personal agendas to get in the way of your vote tonight. Don't use them to usurp the definition of the neighborhood notes. I know you all have a strong feeling on bringing business revenue into the city. It's a very commendable thing. But this was written for a specific purpose. It's self-explanatory, and it's your duty to really uphold and enforce this. That's why you're in the City Council. Remember, a citizen's look to you to lead by example. And the last thing I want to say is, what if this business fails? How do you repurpose a building like this? It's a mini-storage. It can't be repurposed for anything else. Now, I wish no ill will on the developer, nothing. But sometimes businesses just fail. They do. And I'll give you one word: Kmart. Everybody knows the story of Kmart. So I hope you take this into your consideration in your vote tonight. So I strongly urge you to vote no on this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Louise Blum, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Louise Blum, and I've been a resident of Troy for 30 years. I recently live at 242 Harrington Drive in the Harrington Park condos. I'm here tonight to oppose the rezoning and the building of the easy storage facility on Long Lake. I feel that is an enormous building on a very small piece of property. It will be nothing but an eyesore to the residential community surrounding the area. I hope that all of you, too, will also oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Don Blum, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Don Blum, and I've been a Troy resident for 30 years. We live in Harrington Park now and had two homes in Troy previous to that. I took a ride on Long Lake a few days ago, and all the new construction that's on Long Lake, from Dequinter to Adams, is all residential. There are 13 new homes under construction off Long Lake, 1/10th of a mile east of John R. There are two new $400,000-plus homes under construction on the corner of Allison and Long Lake, a half-mile east of Rochester Road by J.C. Park. There are two new houses on Long Lake, a huge $1.3 million home and a $750,000 home next to it, 3/10th of a mile west of Rochester Road by Somerton, and two new $575,000 houses on Somerton off Long Lake. So what's the point? The point is, there's a demand for new housing in Troy. Houses and condos are selling like hotcakes at any price point. Troy needs more housing to bring new people into the city, young people, the millennials. But we also need single families and single-story ranches and condos to keep our current residents in the city as they begin to age, the baby boomers, as they need to downsize or need a home that is all on one level because they can't climb stairs anymore. This property is suited for a building, a few ranch homes or a few ranch condos, and the property is perfect because it's already zoned residential. So let's keep it that way. As you will hear shortly, there's an offer about a year ago to purchase those two parcels and build 10 condos, and the offer was for more than easy storage is paying. A three-story, 38-foot storage facility will tower over everything in the area, including the trees, and be three times taller than Traverro in the shopping center, three times taller than Kroger and anything on that corner. taller than Kroger and anything on that corner. It would be out of proportion. It doesn't fit. It doesn't blend with the appearance or character of the surrounding commercial buildings, and the storage facility will increase traffic and possibly crime rate. Many of the storage facility customers will be transient and only coming to the facility once or twice a year and will not support our local businesses. On the other hand, leaving the property zoned residential and building a few new condos or houses would increase the number of permanent residents in Troy, and these people will shop at Traverro, eat at Kim's, buy groceries at Kroger's, fill their prescriptions at CVS, buy cards at Hallmark, bank at Community Choice, fill their gas tanks at Mobil Station, and pay property taxes. I can go on and on, but I think you get the idea. The three-story storage facility does not fit the appearance and character.
Mr. Blum.
Therefore, please vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Alan Kerr, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmembers.
Please pay attention to that. When the yellow light gets on, you have one minute to try and wrap it up. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Alan Kerr. I live at 187 Harrington Drive. I'm on the Board of Directors for the condo association. And my concerns are the land-to-building ratio. Nationally, it's 2.2-plus ratio of land to building. This is .87, 107,000 square feet on 87,000 square feet of land. It was mentioned earlier, the person that put in the proposal back in February 2016 was Harry Partalos, a well-known builder in Troy. And he has a whole cash offer still open and standing for this property to build residential. The non-conforming portion of the building relates to the three-story building. East of I-75, there's only two buildings, other than Rochester, other than Big Beaver, that are more than three-story: Ballmont Hospital and Macy's at the Oakland Mall. Everything else is two or less. This does not fit in with the structure of Troy. And I think the key thing here is that the businesses in the M-note are all daily-type businesses. The easy storage is not. It doesn't conform to the location of the M-note, and that's the key. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Lou Sandy, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Lou Sandy, and I live in Harrington Park also. I'd like to talk a little bit about how I feel about our property values with the construction of this facility. As we all know, our assessed valuation declined almost 30% during the housing bubble. We've been lucky now, to an extent that our current assessed valuation is close to when we bought in 2005, to our purchase price. Today, residential properties have shown significant increases selling in Troy, and it appears to be a strong seller's market in 2017. It appears to me that the storage facility in a residential area will reduce my buyer pool. Would you pay $360,000 to look at a three-story storage facility? I don't think so. Once you rezone commercial for the storage facility, it may become the tip of the iceberg. First, the storage facility, then Ridgedale Players, and possibly even the property owned by the City of Troy. We in Harrington Park have just, during the last quarter of 2016, installed all-new siding, all-new gutters, in an attempt to add value to our facilities. But this added value is suspect once you rezone and put this storage facility in place. I know the council does not have an easy job trying to balance property owner rights between residents and developers. But I would think it's the City Council's mission to enhance residential property value and increase buyer polls and not diminish the aforementioned. That's it.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Philip Omen, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening. Good evening. Hi, my name is actually Brandon Omen. I'm speaking on my father's behalf, Philip. He is a resident at Harrington Park as well. I think the biggest thing that we're concerned about is obviously the rezoning, but why not in an area that's more suited for it, say Stevenson and Maple, or John R., Oakland Mall, or an area where this type of facility fits? We also don't understand the need for another storage facility. As we've heard from other speakers, there's an abundance in the surrounding area and in the city itself, all with availability. So, I think we'd just like you to vote no and consider how the residents and how that impacts our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on James Deepa, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Deepa James, and I'm the resident of 177 Partridge Drive. I would like to bring your attention to some important safety concerns I have in relation to this proposal. We moved from Philadelphia to Troy three years ago. Both myself and my husband is working long hours shifts, and my husband is working in Mount Morris. We chose to live in Troy because we wanted to raise our three children in a peaceful and safe neighborhood. Troy is considered one of the safest cities in USA. We want to continue to keep Troy a safe city. We should encourage any business or proposals which will hamper the safety and security of the neighborhood. I would like to emphasize on child safety. Nowadays, crimes against children is alarmingly increasing. Majority of families in the neighborhood has school-going children. As a mother of three young girls, I am very much concerned about safety of our children. Currently, I allow them to play outside in our private yard. But with the upcoming storage facility, I don't think it's going to be a safe choice to allow my kids to play outside. With a three-story building in front of our house, I don't want any antisocial person to target my kids or any other kids in the neighborhood playing outside and putting their life in danger. Non-parents can tolerate crimes against their children. As I was going around collecting signatures, I personally talked to the neighborhood people, and nobody seems to be interested in the storage facility coming to our neighborhood or is planning to use it. So, who are we building it for? Outsiders is going to use the hundreds of storage units. That means hundreds of strangers will be coming to our neighborhood on a daily basis. I'm afraid it's a big threat to the safety and security of the neighborhood. Company may claim that they will verify their clients, but they are not verifying the people who are coming with them. Even if company has policies on items that can be stored in the units, they are not going to verify the boxes that are going to be stored. So, we don't know what is going to be stored in the units. Last year, ABC News reported that crimes related to self-storage is increasing. So, why should we go for something which is not beneficial to the community but will ruin the peace and safety of the neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Susan Dunlap, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Hello, I'm Susan Dunlap. I live on Charleston Drive, and I'm opposed to this easy storage building because the footprint is way too large. Three stories tall is way too much for our neighborhood. The building is way too wide. There is no room for proper ingress and egress. It's to be a drive-through building. Now, where do you see a drive-through building other than a parking deck facility? The setback is wrong. The building is as if it's sitting on the sidewalk. It's way far ahead of where the Ace Hardware is. It's not good to the appearance to the eye. There should be further setback. There are too many units, 700 units. It's like piling 700 garages in our neighborhood on one small lot. The noise and light pollution is going to affect us all. It's all of us who live in the area. It's uncalled for. The lights will be on all night and noise from traffic. We have traffic issues to consider, and the whole concept is overbuilding the area. It would be as if you were plunking a Costco right next to Kroger's. That's how out of proportion this thing is. The size is way out of proportion. Please, Mayor and City Council, oppose the rezoning of this property for the reason of there is no benefit to the neighborhood. The proposed usage would only benefit the developer and owner of the property, not the neighborhood. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Robert Dunlap, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, good evening. And it's Ronald. She typed it in wrong, I guess.
No, I think I pronounced it wrong. It says Ronald.
Okay, no problem.
My fault.
I will allow that. I just wanted to, I don't want to repeat everything that's already been said. I just want to voice my opinion, and I'm strongly opposed to it. I don't think there's been much that hasn't been said already. A 33-foot building in this area doesn't belong here. It's inappropriate. Boundaries are too close. It's just a core value issue with me. It doesn't belong here, and I just trust and leave my faith in the board's hands that you'll vote properly and vote for the citizens of Troy and not a developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Sheila Edwards, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
My name is Sheila Edwards. I'm a resident of Troy. I've lived off and on for 34 years. Quite simply, City Council, Mayor, the building doesn't fit. It doesn't fit in the residential area. It doesn't fit on Long Lake Road. We don't need another storage facility in the City of Troy, but if you have to have one, plunk it on Crooks Road north of Long Lake. There's plenty of property there. Or on Rochester Road, where it's a better fit. I hope you will take into account all the residents' feelings and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Shanda Rizan Mohamad Rangan, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening. My name is Sundares Mohamad Rangan.
You did a better job than I did on that.
I know. 21 characters. I'm living in Carlson Park subdivision for the last 11 years. I just want to, I'm opposed to the rezoning of the land from R1B to NNM, No-District, and the building of storage facility, as it is going to do more harm than good to our wonderful community. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next is Ram Krishnan, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. I oppose the rezoning. I've been a proud resident of Troy since 1988. We have raised two wonderful children in this community, and this is the very first time I'm here in front of you to talk about anything, any of my concern. It is a pretty serious concern for me and all the residents who are living around this property which you're planning to, you know, approve. You have heard a lot from the residents who live right across the street. I'm from, I live on Carlson Park, in Glen's at Carlson Park subdivision, and one of our neighbors in the subdivision recently has put his house on sale, and over the weekend, when somebody came to look at it, and it was, you know, he found out that the easy storage is going to be built in that area, and he has backed off from looking at our subdivision right now. So, I really do not understand the reason behind the need to rezone this area. I really do not understand, as an engineer and as a program manager, I just don't understand the logic that we are following to approve this. And I heard from the city manager that we are doing pretty comfortable on the city budget, and quality of life is the theme. Then, I think we need to do some justice to that team and make sure that our residents have a safe living in that area, especially so many families with children. So, I humbly request to you all to oppose this and vote no to this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Pat Criswell, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1.
Good evening. My husband and I are property owners at 26 Breymar Drive. We were mailed information about the proposed easy storage building. We attended the open house at Lucino Restaurant to learn more about the proposal from the easy storage representatives. We are not in favor of the rezoning because, like other people who have spoken tonight, we think the proposal isn't a good fit for the neighborhood. A storage facility doesn't match the residential use, other types of retail businesses, professional services, and offices that are all along Long Lake Road. And attaching some type of retail business to the storage facility or including a living wall doesn't enhance the proposal or change the essence of the business purpose for the building, which is storage. I drove by the easy storage facility in Royal Oak to see it. I've seen the easy storage facility in Sterling Heights. They are monoliths that stand out, and not in a good way. There are already eight storage facilities in Troy, including the one being built on Rochester Road. An Internet search on storage facilities in nearby cities revealed Troy already has the most, followed by Rochester Hills with seven, Sterling Heights with six, Auburn Hills and Madison Heights with five each, Pontiac and Royal Oak with four each, and Birmingham and Bloomfield Hills with zero. Besides touting its range of homes, exemplary schools, and world-class shopping, dining, and entertainment, I don't want Troy's claim to fame to be, "We store your stuff." Attractive neighborhoods are the foundation of a strong city. Businesses follow. But the types of businesses, and more so, their location, will make or break a neighborhood. We also have concerns about traffic flow and safety of vehicles pulling in and out of a storage facility so near to the traffic light at the turnaround located close to the entrance of the shopping plaza anchored by Ace Hardware. As residents who use that stretch of Long Lake Road frequently, navigating traffic in that area can be challenging at times. Cars or trucks, with or without trailers attached, using the storage facility will increase traffic flow and safety concerns. Can you imagine a truck with a trailer in the late afternoon or early evening on a weekday crossing lanes of traffic to head west on Long Lake after dropping off or picking up materials at that facility? The aesthetic of Long Lake Road would not be enhanced by the building being proposed. While the current property has not been maintained to keep up with other properties in the neighborhood, replacing it with an easy storage facility isn't an improvement. It's a detriment. Honestly, I'd rather wave to a neighbor as I walk along Long Lake
Mr. Criswell, thank you.
Instead of seeing walls that are three stories high.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Jack Bootress, Troy resident, who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening, Jack. Jack Woodress, I live in 199 Partridge Drive, just behind the storage facility where they want to build. Just to tell you guys, I work in a commercial property want to build. Just to tell you guys, I work in a commercial property every single day. Every day I have a call from any client. He want to buy a property. As soon he say, storage or farm or manufacturer or I want to open any kind of commercial property, in my mind, as a commercial broker, it goes to the light industrial building, light industrial area. Troy have two, three facility, light industrial. I mean, the storage facility, it's coming in the middle of residential. Even if you search or you talk to any commercial broker, when you tell him I want to build a storage facility or manufacturer or anything, he's going to send you to the light industrial area. That area, Long Lake, is not a light industrial area. We cannot change from residential to light industrial. We have only the Ace Hardware, which is one story, serving the community, selling the flowers, selling old kind materials. By myself, I run, running to the Ace Hardware, get the stuff and go back. But what I'm going to do with the storage facility, store what? 90% or 99% of a Troy resident, they have basement. We not in Texas. They came from Texas. I was in Texas about two weeks ago. All the easy storage, all, any kind of storage is have to be in the light industrial area. That's, there is a road support to that. There is traffic, easy traffic, not around the residential. I was last week, just two days ago, in St. Louis. I saw the storage facility, same concept what they have. But look at it after two years. Those facility, they run down the way they build it. They building 700 unit, just like before when they used to build hotels, 250 unit, 250 rooms. Now all these 250 rooms hotels, they went out of business. They are building, and you saw guys, by Crook and 75. They built all these hotel, no more than 108 room. Why? Because their occupancy is no more than 50% occupancy. The rest of the vacancy, the owner will pay money to, you know, to maintain that property. 700, what's the occupancy? I have eight facility, storage in Troy. All of it is here. They are 56% occupancy. There's Ibrahim, John Ibrahim, he own one in 15 Mile and Livernoy. I manage that property for him. We usually, we always, we always have maybe 70%. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Bootress. Thank you. Next I'll call on Nick Bootress, Troy resident who wishes to speak on H1. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. Just a brief background. I grew up in Troy. I was born in Royal Oak Beaumont. I'm 30 years old. Briefly moved out of school just for college and law school. And from a perspective of the health, safety and welfare of the children in the neighborhood directly south of this proposed storage facility, I grew up going to Ace Hardware, building skateboard ramps, going to Little Caesar's, going to Bootleg. These are places where children and myself traverse to just walking from our neighborhood. I don't see that happening in the near future, especially with my nieces and nephews, my neighbors who have three children, the neighborhood behind us that is just full of children. I don't see that happening or their parents allowing this to go on, allowing them to walk freely in the safe neighborhood that we have now with this high volume storage facility. And I want to highlight a few points that other residents have made. The characteristics of this building, it's going to be three stories. I haven't seen any building besides Beaumont's and Macy's that is greater than two floors or two stories. And a big thing, going back to the safety and welfare, other than the current legislation and current laws that are out there establishing what is illegal and what is not illegal, there is nothing establishing what can be, can be, what the storage facility can be used for. Yes, illegal activity cannot be conducted on the premise. However, that's based on a self-complaint system. Are we relying on the tenants to report crimes when they're the most likely ones to engage in the crime? And second, the violation of the ordinances. This is a node. It just doesn't fit there. Every business in this area is lights out by nine o'clock. That's not what's going to happen. The residents on Partridge Drive are going to come down Elgin and they're going to see a three-story building. It's not going to hide behind trees. There's no way that's going to happen. And again, the land-to-building ratio is above the national average and we need more businesses like the NALC and AJ Desmond and Sons that are going to be here for 100 years. That's who we want to bring into the city. We want to bring the millennials, bring them housing. All my friends are leaving the city because there is nowhere to live. There is absolutely nowhere to live for them. And it's unfortunate because this is a city that I'd like to go raise my kids in. So if approved, I would propose recommendations for the character of the building.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. This will be a public hearing item. If anyone else wishes to speak, they can speak at that time. At this time, is there any city council, city administration response to public comment? I'm sure there will be some discussion during H1. Next on the agenda is H1, which is a postponed item. H1 is a conditional rezoning application, file number CRJPCR 2016-004. Good evening, Brent. Proposed easy storage mixed use, 121 West Long Lake parcels, 88-20-16-200-007-008, Section 16, from R1B, one-family residential district to NN, which is M, neighborhood node, M district.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Good evening. This is a continuation of a public hearing. That public hearing is open at this point and we will continue that public hearing with an introduction from staff and then the proposed...
Thank you.
Proposed plan.
Thank you.
Good evening.
This item was on the March 20th City Council meeting and it was postponed at the request of the developer. We see an aerial photograph here of the site. It's outlined in red. It's located west of Traver Hardware and east of Ridgedale Players. To the south, you see Partridge. This is a single-family detached residential neighborhood. And to the north, we've got Harrington Park and Charleston Club, which are attached condominium developments. Here we see the zoning map. Notice the subject parcel is presently R1B, one-family residential, as is Ridgedale Players and the property to the south, a single-family neighborhood. North is RT, one is two-family attached. And to the east is neighborhood node and they're proposing to extend that neighborhood node across this property to the west. This is a color rendering of the proposed site plan. It is slightly under 110,000 square feet in area. They propose approximately 700 storage units, a 600 square foot office, 2,700 square feet of retail. These are color renderings of the proposed building. We had a public hearing on this item in February in front of the Planning Commission. I tried to summarize some of the issues that were brought up at the meeting. You've heard some of them this evening and you've heard some other ones, but this is, this is our attempt to kind of gather the comments together and address them. So the three categories that seemed to be most prevalent were spot zoning, height enassing of the building, and loss of privacy. I'll quickly take these one at a time. Spot zoning. Spot zoning is a frequently used planning term. It's somewhat consistently misunderstood. In order for a rezoning to be a spot zoning, it has to meet these three criteria. It needs to be inconsistent with the master plan, it needs to be small, and it needs to be isolated. So let's talk about the master plan. Many of the residents have referenced the fact tonight that this property is owned neighborhood node. It's node M, which is located here on the map. The neighborhood node concept, and I'll speak to it very briefly here, it was formally defined in the 2008 master plan and this was carried over from the Vision 2020 exercise that many of you will remember from about 10 years ago. What it attempts to do is develop various intersections of major thoroughfares. There are 21 of them. Develop them as economic neighborhoods. And as a couple of the people who spoke indicated, it's to provide the basic needs of the community and serve as a 21st century village centers. Along with this concept of community and village centers, there's a greater intensity that's permitted, there's a greater density that's permitted, and there are higher design standards that are required. And this is an important point. Nodes must respect and not overpower adjacent neighborhoods. This is a concept that was thought about by the Planning Commission and this is a concept that you need to wrap your hands around the City Council. The balance between creating the community and the 21st century village centers and allowing the greater intensity and density in design, but not overpowering the adjacent neighborhoods. So neighborhood node M, this is lifted directly from the master plan. Neighborhood node M should remain predominantly commercial, catering to local needs and regional traffic. New development or redevelopment should be mostly commercial and should serve to further enhance this successful commercial area. Opportunities for integrated residential or office development should be considered only when clearly secondary to commercial development. Here's another illustration of the zoning that's proposed. You can see my pointer here. They're proposing to extend the neighborhood node further to the west. So you can see it's not small. If rezoned, would not be small and would not be isolated. The second issue is height enassing. The Planning Commission discussed this at great length with the developer and they were concerned with the height and the massing of the building. The flat roof portion of the building, which is, which is most of it, is going to be 34 and a half feet high, the flat roof section. Now, the tower element here in the front or in the north part of the building is proposed to be 38 feet in height. It is, it is higher than the single-family residential neighborhood maximal height by eight feet. So the underlying R1B district maximal height presently is 30 feet and this is proposed to be 34 and a half feet. So granted, it is higher, but it's higher by less than five feet in terms of the flat roof component. Now, the massing, it is a massive building. As I indicated, it's 110,000 square feet in area. The developer is attempting to build this up using architectural elements such as columns, the live wall, windows, using different materials, different colors, different textures, onings, landscaping, et cetera. The Planning Commission felt that the developer did a very good job of breaking up that massing of the building. And finally, this was, this was mentioned by a number of residents at the Planning Commission, public hearing. Loss of privacy. What the developer is proposing to do is set back the building 75 feet from the residential neighborhood to the south. And in that 75 feet, they're proposing a wall here to provide privacy and security, providing a path, a bench. This is a rain garden. That's sustainable stormwater elements, number of trees, and they're going to essentially create a private park for use of the residential neighbors to the south. These are the standards for rezoning that were considered by the Planning Commission and will be considered by you this evening. I'm not going to read them all, but they include that the rezoning will not impact public health, safety and welfare, and it will ensure compatibility with adjacent uses of land. These are the standards for special use approval in Section 9.03. I'm not going to read them all, but they include compatibility with adjacent uses and compatibility with the master plan. And there are some other units, some other standards, also 9.03 here on the PowerPoint. February 14th, 2017, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and recommended approval by a seven to one vote. As all rezonings in Michigan, this rezoning and our zoning ordinance allows for a protest petition to be submitted opposing a rezoning application. Essentially, well, it's probably easiest by, I'll try reading this. This is language that's lifted right out of the state act and it's in ordinance. It's very wordy. But if it's essentially, if a protest petition is signed by the owners of at least 20% of the area of land included within an area extending outward 100 feet from the land in question, excluding public land, the proposed amendment shall not be passed except by a two-thirds vote of City Council. So in other words, a super majority of two-thirds will be required or four votes with a full count, with a full body. So we had three protest petitions that were submitted to City Council. One was submitted in February, signed by 14 people. Another one was submitted in March, signed by 39 people. And another one was submitted in May, signed by 64 people. None of those were valid. None of them met the criteria of the zoning ordinance in that they were filed, they were not filed correctly per the zoning ordinance of state law. There was also a petition that was, that was submitted. It wasn't a protest petition. It was called a petition to support thoughtful development Troy. It was submitted today. It was signed by 746 people, also not valid. So there's four petitions that were, that were submitted but did not, were not filed correctly per the zoning ordinance of state law. However, there was a protest petition filed, May 5th. It was signed by one property owner. It was representing this property here to the east, the retail strip center. And that represents 45% of the qualifying area. Therefore, it's valid. Therefore, this application needs five votes of City Council. That summarizes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Brent. Questions from council? Councilman Pennington.
Brent, thank you. I've got a question. It's per your wording, you said that it must not overpower the existing neighborhood. How did the conversation go that this possibly does not overpower? It's just going to be, it looks like it's going to be a huge project. I'm just curious how it does not overpower the existing.
Well, and trying to categorize the comments of nine planning commissioners is very difficult, but the, I'll go back to this illustration here. The developer made an actual attempt to keep the height of the profile of the building relatively low. And when I say relatively low, it's a three-story building. So rather than go with exceptionally tall ceilings and interior space, the flat roof portion was kept at under 35 feet. And the massing, it's a very lengthy building. It's oriented, it's oriented in a north-south direction. So from an impact on, on the properties directly to the south and the properties across Long Lake, it was felt that this actually worked the best way from a, from a neighborhood impact and that the massing, the length of the building, they did a very good job of breaking it up and trying to tone down the massing.
Thank you.
Council questions? Councilman Henderson.
So trying to keep some retail in the building, it looks like there's a lot of retail going on a front. So can you tell me what those conversations are? What are they thinking in terms of businesses or neighborhood go-to areas?
Well, the applicant is here this evening. He can, he can answer that better than I can, but I can tell you, at the time that we met with the Planning Commission, he did not have any plans for the retail component. He was, he was open and he wanted to add an element there that did cater to the, to the neighborhood, such as a coffee shop.
Reaport M. Horderick.
Okay, I've looked at this about 8,000 times, but it's funny when you're in the meeting and it comes back up how something hits you. The five criteria that we're supposed to, the slide, can you put that back up? Do you mind?
Zoning code.
Yeah, thank you.
It's on the screen now.
Cause or increase? I hate, I hate to do this to you here, but non-conformity. I'm very familiar with this area and on paper, and if you just know of it as Long Lake and Livernoy, you think this can kind of make sense. But when you know this area and the neighborhood feel of it, it intuitively feels like it doesn't... doesn't conform. So, but I realize I'm not sure I understand the definition. Can you?
Well, that's.
Is it another subjective thing we're thinking about? Or are there some specific things I'm missing?
No, in this instance, the rezoning would not cause or increase any non-conformity if it's rezoned because the maximum height in the underlying district is greater than three stories. You can actually go higher than three stories in the underlying district. What the applicant is doing is conditionally offering a site plan that restricts the height to, again, the flat portion of the roof to 34 and a half feet and the tower element to 38 feet. So it's not, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cause or increase a non-conformity in terms of height.
So we're not talking about the conformity to the, I'm sorry, can't.
It's okay.
To the, that doesn't apply to the adjacent.
I would say that what you're struggling with Councilman Hordeck is probably number five, which is talking about compatibility.
So those are two very different ideas there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Abraham.
Two questions. Mr. Donahue had made reference to zoning ordinance 5.06. Can you address the concerns that were raised there with that particular ordinance? And then the second part, there was a reference made by Ms. Weber to the Romanian church and plans being scrapped because the height of the building was higher than permissible.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I think 5.06 relates to the neighborhood node provisions. And this, if rezoned, this application would not require any variances and would meet the requirements for the neighborhood node. In terms of the, did I answer your question on that one? Okay, so the other issue was related to the proposed church. I believe the resident indicated that the church project was defeated, it's actually, it was postponed, so it's not dead at this point. But the underlying zoning district in that instance, they had a requirement for churches to not exceed 30 feet unless they had greater setback. So in that instance, the underlying zoning district was, I believe, R1B. There's a, as I indicated earlier, the maximal height in R1B is 30 feet. This would be a rezoning to neighborhood node which would allow a higher height. So it's comparing two different zoning districts.
Councilman McCollum.
Can you actually go to the part of the presentation where you had the use requirements for neighborhood node M? There it is. Nope. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That was an easy one.
Did you have a question there?
I think that was it.
Okay, thank you. Got it. Councilman Baker.
I'm going to ask you to go to another slide. There was a slide that showed the intersection of Long Lake and Livers, and that, yeah, that one. When I look at this, I see, you know, really the neighborhood node Ms are a square, and then this proposes to kind of go out of that. Do you have any idea where in the rest of the city other node intersections have expanded beyond, it's more of a square footprint, and has this happened much yet to your, with your historic knowledge? I mean, because just looking at that, it looks out of place as a final picture, because across the street, the condos aren't going to be rezoned because they're not going to be torn down. And I mean, it's residential housing that probably established subdivisions everywhere else. I'm just wondering, are we doing this in other parts of the city, going outside of that square?
Nothing comes to mind right now. Mark, can you think of any? But this is, if you forget about the notion of just a node, for any rezoning like this where you add an intersection and you start to, you start to increase the envelope, there's always, there's always a thinking of, is this the last one? And if you open it up, if you go further to the west or further to the east, at what point is, you know, at what point are we going too far? In this sense, so we take everything by the case-by-case basis is essentially the way to answer that. So the Planning Commission staff, the City Council weighs each and every application on its own merits. In this instance, it's, the Ridgedale Players is to the west, and all the things I talked about in terms of, in terms of trying to, trying to move forward with an application that fits and taking steps to make it fit. Again, it's a case-by-case, it's a case-by-case basis.
I'm listening, I'm going to grab some water. I'm getting. That's okay. It's an opinion question for you. And when you look at this, and what we're doing, what we do, the master plan calls for neighborhood nodes, does this specific project cater to local needs and regional traffic, in your opinion? I mean, and I ask because there's 2,700 square feet of retail in 110,000 square foot building. That seems grossly out of balance to say that that's really about the local needs and the retail space that hopefully we'll hear about what the plans are. But how do you reconcile that? I know you're not the Planning Commission, but you play an active role in planning. I'm just curious your take on that.
Well, one of the reasons for the 2,700 square feet of retail is to give it more of a presence, more of a local presence and provide more service for the area. I did listen to the applicant address the, you know, the people who are going to be storing their stuff here. You know, North Americans have a lot of stuff. And when we talked with the developer at pre-application meeting, and we talked at Planning Commission, it led me to believe, I believe led the Planning Commission to believe that the people are going to be using this will be from, you know, from a, not a very wide circle. It will be used by, predominantly by people who are living fairly close proximity to this.
So I apologize for not being here when this was on the agenda the first time, but I was watching from home with my slippers on. So I remember Ridgedale Players came, and he acknowledged that he was in favor of this. And he is arguably the only one that abuts this other than Travar Hardwear, which is already commercial. And arguably, Ridgedale Players is, I know it's zoned residential, but it's not necessarily residential. So they're in favor of it, but the parcel between Ridgedale Players and the easternmost portion of this is all heavily wooded, a lot of real scrap trees, right? And I noticed in the book that they are going to, I forget what, they're going to keep six trees? Is that, those are six mature trees in that area, or are those trees that are going to be replaced? Or do you have any idea about what is planned for the trees? I know they're going to cut down all the scrap, right?
Yeah, there were not a lot of quality trees on the site. I'd have to look, I'd have to look it up to answer your question, but basically, the amount of trees they cut down, they had to replace with 25 trees, given what they took down, based on the caliper inches, and they're exceeding that.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Brent, a couple of questions. Staff supports this, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, staff supports the conditional zoning application as well as the special use application and the preliminary site plan.
You feel it fits all five categories?
Yes.
You indicated earlier that you didn't feel it was, it was not small and it was not isolated, so that.
The rezoning, yes.
The rezoning. Okay. Thank you. At this point, we'd like to give an opportunity to the applicant and the developer to make Good evening, Mr. Semcina.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm Charles Semcina, representing Easy Storage. And with me and part of our presentation tonight will be presented by three of us, with Bill Bowman from Easy Storage and also Steve Nolan. And if I could just start out, I just want to give you a little bit of my background because some of it's relevant to some of the issues that came forward at the podium during the public comment. I spent 10 years of my career as an assistant Oakland County prosecutor. Part of that time was in the anti-drug unit. I worked extensively in most, all cities in southeast Michigan, but in Troy in particular, I worked very closely with your police department. The time I wasn't in the drug unit, I was general crimes and worked with Troy police officers on that. And I'm familiar with a lot of the aspects of criminal activity. I also was a city attorney in Royal Oak for 10 years. We have storage units in Royal Oak, and I have some experience with storage units. I also was elected as a city councilperson in Royal Oak and served for four years and had to do what you are doing right now, trying to make fact-based decisions based on the evidence and zoning ordinance criteria. And I know it's a little difficult, but I'm hoping that based on what we tell you and the evidence we present, the facts we present, that we can make your job a little bit easier. It's always difficult following a lengthy public comment because people are emotional, this deals with their homes, their properties, they live nearby. And many times, those fears can be alleviated to some extent by the more dissemination of information, facts, and evidence. Questions can be answered, and that's our job is to provide those facts and those evidence to you as a council so that you can make informed decisions. And also, the public will hear, you know, what we have to say, and hopefully that will help them a little bit. You know, most of the comments, I thought, were kind of based on some fear and anxiety. There are some statements that were just conclusionary in nature, as if they were factual. And we're going to say that some of those were not really factual statements. I think they're more driven by fear of the unknown, the unexpected, change, something that's a little bit different coming into their neighborhood. You have a great tool here before you with the conditional rezoning, because you also have an agreement and a contract that goes along with that. Other projects may have come into the city, you don't always get to vote on them, the Planning Commission approves them. Here, there's a little bit more of a gauntlet for us to go through because we did work for six to eight months with the city, with your staff, your planning department, fine-tuning this plan to make it work on this site. We worked with the Planning Commission and fine-tuned that plan and received, you know, a very favorable recommendation to this council with a seven to one vote that analyzed the components of the zoning ordinance and made factual decisions and factual findings based on those components of the zoning ordinance. You have facts and evidence coming for your consideration from a number of different sources. You know, first you have your own experts, your consultants, your planners, who wrote a very detailed report for you. They recommend approval for a number of reasons. You have information that we provided in a book, was handed out last week, and I think it was online also. But what's important in that book is not just a voluminous amount of information about the projects, but a lot of information directly from representatives from other cities that worked with Easy Storage and Bill and Steve, but their projects to shape them, and recommendations from those cities on how well those projects worked out, recommendations from neighbors who live close by. The book is filled with very positive comments, and that's because Easy Storage and Bill and Steve run one of the best organizations for storage units in the country. They present and provide kind of the Cadillac of an end product. They provide a good product, a good structure, and they're the best managers, I think, in the country for these types of facilities. You also get information provided directly by us, what we're going to say here tonight, and from your own Planning Commission, because you have those minutes and you're able to review those documents that were provided to you. I point out, based on my experience in the anti-drug unit, that I have not personally had any problems with the storage facilities in Royal Oak when I was a city attorney trying to enforce, you know, laws and local ordinances. After I left that position and after I left my position as a city councilman, I have my own private law practice, and I worked with Bill and Steve on a project in Royal Oak, where it was a conditional rezoning project just like this one. It's on Woodward Avenue right now, some of you may have, you may have gone and taken a look at it. That was rezoned from commercial to industrial, and that ordinance, industrial, was where the facilities were allowed. And it was rezoned, it's the only piece of property on Woodward Avenue that's ever been rezoned in that manner. But it was rezoned in that way for a number of reasons under the same law, the conditional rezoning. It went through the Planning Commission, went to the City Council, and there was a written contract to help the city enforce anything that may happen in the future, any problems. If you did do a drive-by, you could see that the east side of the building is separated from the neighborhood only by a side street. Much, the houses and the single-family residential homes are much closer to that building than what's proposed here in Troy, because here we have the 70-foot buffer, the rain garden, the green area, and also distances by the streets themselves that provide distance from the project. Going the other direction, you got the whole distance of Long Lake, which is a very big and major road, before you get to the condominiums. The project was very well-received in Royal Oak by the neighborhood. People came to the meetings, they came to the Planning Commission meetings, they came to the City Council meetings. The project was built, and if you looked at it, that building is much taller and much bigger than the one proposed here in Troy. That's a four-story building. This is a three-story building, and it's positioned much closer. When you analyze your report from your experts here in the city, the setbacks here that are provided in Troy are much greater than the other project in Royal Oak. The height is shorter, it's much smaller, and it's well-received by the neighborhood. The project was deemed compatible also in Royal Oak and also in all the other cities that you see mentioned in the book we handed out to you. Approvals have been granted and rezonings have been granted because of the nature of the project being unique, the design of the project is put together in a way to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods and to make the building look attractive. You may have some unattractive storage units in Troy, they may have been built a while ago, and maybe they were built under different ordinance provisions that were different from conditional rezoning, where you have a contract also. And the level of scrutiny here that we've gone through and the cooperation that we've had with the city and back and forth has really presented us with an opportunity to create a really unique and beautiful project that will be used mostly by people who live within a very short distance of this facility. I know that crime and drugs was a big issue. I have a letter here that if we could hand out and pass around. I asked the police chief in Royal Oak to address this issue of police calls for service and crime, and he gives a very favorable report to you here right now. And in fact, not only has he not had any incidents of any significance at this facility, but there's been an improvement in the situation in that area. Before Easy Storage was built, there was a fast food restaurant on this location, and there were a lot of police calls for service, fights, disorderly conduct. This was in the south end of town, even though it was on Woodward, it's kind of, we used to call it the ditch because Woodward goes under 696, and it's not the best area. And our experience, where I actually have some facts to present you, is when we deal with police calls and policing issues, is Easy Storage provided an improvement in the situation at their location in Royal Oak. It did not create any problems, in fact, there hasn't been any problems since they opened up. The traffic issues that were raised by some of the people in the public comment are virtually nonexistent. The police, from my experience and from what I know, have not had to have any special traffic patrols or issue any normally large amount of traffic tickets by the facility. And in fact, your own experts in your own report say that traffic is not going to be a problem here. The facility is really deemed a low-intensity use because people don't go to their unit every day. Some people might, but most of them store things and they may not return to their unit for weeks or months. It is a low-intensity use. The facility itself, because the activity is contained on the inside, becomes a facility where noise, vibrations, the things that are mentioned in your the things that are mentioned in your ordinance never occur and are visible to the nearby neighbors in the residential areas. The... Your report confirms that. That also confirms that police and public services will not be impacted. And we know from our own experience that police services and other city services don't have any negative impact caused by our facilities. It does meet the requirements of your zoning ordinance. The use is permissible, and it has sufficient parking. Sometimes facilities, you know, don't have enough parking and the parking spills over. We have more parking than the ordinance requires. Some of it's on the inside because people load and unload, and some of it's on the outside. The areas behind the facility where the... Before you get to the seventy-foot rain garden, there's no activity back there. There's not going to be, there's not loading or unloading or doors that people open up the yellow garage door and put things in. It's quiet back there. The hours of operation are reasonable. It's not open all night. I think someone mentioned it's open all night, and people are going to be running in and out of there. There's an on-duty manager there. There's an apartment right there. There's someone to keep an eye on what's going on in the interior of this facility when it's open to the public. People will have a card to get in, but they won't be able to get in, you know, after nine or 10 o'clock at night. Not back, and they won't be able to get back in until the morning. When the doors are open on the outside and they can get in, there's someone there. I had the experience in Royal Oak of a businesswoman who had a business a couple blocks away from the Royal Oak facility, who called me up, it was just about a month ago, and was very complimentary about this facility because she felt safe taking some of her business inventory and storing it there. She could go back and forth, you know, when it was convenient for her. But when she got inside the building, she felt safe, where maybe she wouldn't have in a different industrial area with a more sprawling, surface-consuming storage unit-type place. People in the neighborhood were calling me when the place was under construction. "When is that going to be finished? I really want to put some storage in there. I want to use it." They thought the place might be finished. The exterior was finished first, but the interior was still being worked on. I have a few more comments, but I'd like my compatriots here to be able to throw you some information that I think is very important and relevant to some of the questions that council asks their planner.
Good evening. If we could try to wrap this up in about fifteen, five more minutes, please.
Absolutely. I just wanted, first of all, one of the things that was talked about was the, who are the people who are going to be using our facility? First of all, Steve's going to just pass this out. We keep track of where our tenants come from, and our tenants come from, generally come from one to three miles from our facilities. You know, occasionally it spreads out a little bit further than that, but it certainly isn't, I heard, thirty-six square miles. It's, our main business comes from one to miles away. So it is to the local community. And who are our tenants? Our tenants are local businesspeople who need flexibility with their seasonal inventories. There are small businesspeople who have their office at their home who need a place for their inventories. There are small contractors who don't have, you know, they don't have the business that needs a large warehouse or anything, but they need a safe place for their materials and their tools. So we've got, so you do, it is sort of, it's an incubator for small businesses. It's a flexibility tool for retailers. We have a large amount of office tenants who store files, medical people who store files. We have, and then you've got your residential people who have short-term storage needs. Then we have a lot of residential tenants that have long-term storage needs, where they've consolidated households or whatnot, and they have intakes and things that they do not want to, you know, that they don't have room for. So, and I know everybody's got basements, but it's amazing how, you know, many people with basements need a storage unit for extra stuff, or their kids are moving in and out or coming back and forth from school, that kind of thing. And folks, what it is, our tenants who are, like Chuck mentioned, the greatest growing portion of our tenants is our females, businesspeople, single moms, people like that, and they want to be in a secured environment. Our properties are, they're accessed only by a card during very specific hours. Once they're in our facility, we have between fifty and seventy security cameras throughout the facility, in and out of the facility. So we monitor what happens when people come in. Each door is individually alarmed, so we know when, you know, when somebody comes in. We know when a door is open. Our managers then can watch on the security cameras. They get, and they regularly go out and watch as people are loading and unloading their properties. Because in our contracts, you can't have, you know, flammables, explosives, you can't have, you know, and obviously, you know, drugs. I can tell you that we don't, you know, there's, none of those things are going to happen. I mean, we're going to monitor those things more than you're going to be able to monitor your neighborhood doing that. It's, you know, it's a very sophisticated operation, and we sent you all out by electronic our reference package. And so, we're not just making this up. I mean, we build these things. We, and a number of them are directly in neighborhoods. I mean, a residential street across from a neighborhood, and we are now an integral part of those neighborhoods, we're a positive part of those neighborhoods. Values are going up substantially in those neighborhoods. In our Rock Hill, Missouri project, there were actually old houses around the perimeter of that site. Those were demolished, and we built our project. That neighborhood, the prices in there are doing tremendously well over what they were doing before. So that sort of gives you a synopsis of what we do and where they come from. But Steve, I just quickly want to address the issue where they said, you know, there's already so many storage facilities in Troy, and why would they want to build another one here? And Steve can tell you, because we do a lot of market research and spend a lot of time on that. Thank you.
Without going into too much detail, we've been in the business for forty-five years. Developed seventy locations in about eight different states. We're very knowledgeable in determining whether there's, you know, market demand there. It's basically a square-feet-per-capita formula. With the exception of two, about a couple of locations, I think most of the properties that are in Troy are anywhere from forty-five to, you know, thirty-five years old. Ours actually been one of the, it was the first self-storage facility, nineteen-seventy-one in Troy. But since then, and it's an old, traditional facility, thirty-foot drive, thirty-foot building. But now, the industry's evolved, and we've exclusively been doing these interior drive-through, totally secure self-storage facilities. And I could just tell you that even though that that location that we built forty-five years ago was, you know, was the Cadillac at the time, now, there's just, there's far better product. It doesn't have all the state-of-the-art amenities that our new projects have now. The individual door alarms, which I want you to know, is only audible from our office. It's like a microwave alarm went off. That's it. And, you know, it doesn't have the security cameras. There were no self-storage doors at that time, so they're big, heavy, industrial-strength metal doors that are, you know, are difficult, challenging to lift. Now, the doors, you can just lift with, you know, with one finger, literally. So those are the improvements. Despite that, there's still, not only is it a new and improved prototype, but despite that, there's still plenty of demand in the area, in the market, for a new facility. And I also wanted to just clarify, you know, our standard gate hours, that is seven AM to nine PM, and that's when the property shuts down. Everybody has a gate code, and it will not let you in. It'll let you out after nine, but it will not let you in after nine. So I just wanted to give clarification on that and be glad to clear anything else up with you all. The lighting, the only lighting that we have is going to be on the north side of the building, and it's downlit lighting. We don't have a need for the big, tall, overhead lights. We don't have them anywhere. Again, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the applicant, Councilman Baker?
Just a quick question on what you just said. Your standard gate hours are seven AM to nine PM, so does that mean that you can't, no one can enter the property between nine PM and seven AM? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. That's correct. And our office hours are from nine AM to six PM, Monday to Friday, nine to one on Saturday.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions from council for the applicant? Councilman Henderson?
Can I rattle off a few, or do we just...
Go for it.
Okay.
Go for it.
So, to just reiterate, I had the chief of police address the crime statistics in Troy, and I'm just going to read the paragraph to you. Summary report for the storage facilities in Troy. We have ten storage facilities, locations in Troy during the timeframe of May one to two, May one, two thousand twelve to April thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Those ten locations had a total of fifteen crimes based on FBI crime reporting. Two assaults, two telephone misuse, property thefts, a stolen vehicle, and a recovered stolen vehicle. That comes out to less than one per location per year.
And I would say many of those are probably...
Chuck, could you use the microphone?
I'm sorry. And probably many of those are at the locations that are the older type, less secure, that don't have the type of security we provide. And I think, there was one question you asked earlier, Councilman Baker, but I think this does fit in the neighborhood node because based on our demographics and the handout we gave you, the users of this facility and the vast majority of them will be from the neighborhood. That one-mile radius is where the biggest concentration is. Two miles is the next biggest concentration, and as you move out. Sometimes there's someone who comes from a long distance, but many times it's because they don't have a good, secure facility near them, and they come a little bit further.
And just to clarify, they also, they could be, good chance that they're moving into the area, and when they sign that lease, they're still at their older house and are moving to their new house and storing closer to where they're living.
Right. Or they have a, sometimes they'll have a, they have a business close by, and they have it in their address, which is a little bit further away. But they generally, and if you looked at the circle of competitors, even when the gentleman brought that in and put it up, we said, yeah, there's that, the northwest corridor of Troy and that whole western area is open at this point.
And the locations we provided you are closest locations to Troy. And so that was our Royal Oak at Woodward, just north of 696, Orchard Lake Road, twelve-and-a-half mile in Farmington Hills, and Southfield, a ten-mile in Evergreen.
Councilman Baker?
You haven't addressed the retail space.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you could, just briefly.
Sure, absolutely.
Use the microphone, please.
Sorry. Sorry. We have, the retail, at this point, since we don't know whether we're, if we're building this yet or not, we do not have a tenant in hand. But we generally, for our facilities, we look for things that are going to be, you know, positive for the community, because it's not, it's not going to drive, it doesn't drive our rent, right? It's not, so we generally are very picky and we're patient to find the right fit. And it'll be something like a coffee or donut place, or, you know, it could be a small food place, or it could be a service, it could be, it could be a local business with an office. It could be a State Farm person, or it could be any of those types of things. But we, because it's, you know, we're a long-term holder of real estate, it's important to us to have a good tenant.
Councilman Abraham.
How many of your other Easy Storage facilities have retail components to it?
Four, four or five. Then we've been most recently doing these mixed-use deals in the last, it's been about five, the last five years. So we have five properties that have retail.
And what type of retail are in those?
Well, at retail office, I guess I should say retail office, we have, we have, actually in two of them, we have medical users. We have urgent care-type operations. But this is a small, this is a smaller site. We've had...
We've, as you mentioned, urgent care, and we've had VCA Animal Hospital. We've had Kadova in our Newton, Massachusetts, location. We have Kadova, and that type of...
Verizon, we've had Verizon stores.
Right.
Those kind of things.
Phone's full.
Councilman Henderson?
So how much retail space are you talking, this is a very important piece of this thing for me, because it has to kind of, you know, the community obviously has some reservations, right? So we want to make sure that, you know, whatever is there is going to be something that maybe they can use, even.
It's twenty-seven hundred square feet.
So probably one facility that would be there.
It'll be, it'll be one tenant, because we didn't, because we didn't want to oversat, we didn't want to oversaturate with retail, plus traffic, that adds to traffic. Because our traffic is, the nice thing about our use, well, it's, it does bring, and I tell people this, you have, having six hundred tenants, right, they're not necessarily coming every day, but they're coming on a fairly regular basis. That brings six to seven hundred people to the marketplace, and they, when they're here, they're going to go to the hardware store. They're going to go to the deli over there. They're going to go to Kroger. I mean, so they're, once they're there, they're going to do other things.
Our traffic, just to clarify, will be about four cars an hour at the location.
So it's a very low tra, so if that's a worry, we're less traffic than, say, a typical residential development.
Councilman Pennington?
The one in Royal Oak here, what retail is in this building here?
Oh, in Royal Oak, we do not have retail there. And one of the reasons why that doesn't have retail is because it's in the underpass area. I don't know if you're familiar with Woodward, where you can't, there were two or three businesses that just never, never made it there.
Okay.
But we're in...
It didn't have good retail access, so it wasn't a good retail site.
Right.
Pro Tem Hordick?
Speaking of the Royal Oak facility, I think you said they had to rezone from commercial to industrial?
Correct.
So in Royal Oak, to do a storage facility, it was a different?
No, it's a...
We've had all kinds.
Well, we've done, in almost every, most communities, it's either been a conditional rezoning, or it's been a PUD, like in Farmington Hills, Southfield, in the three or four projects we've done in St. Louis, they've all been PUDs, planned unit developments. Or in Royal Oak, the simplest thing, they felt it was, since they had already done a couple of conditional rezonings, because most people, and the only zoning at that time that we were allowed, that we were allowed use was industrial.
And Royal Oak didn't have the creative...
Chuck.
I'm sorry. Royal Oak didn't have the creative zoning you have with your neighborhood nodes, where you have an area and you're trying to create commercial that services the immediate area. Their ordinance is old and hasn't been as sophisticated and updated like yours, so it was just a pure conditional rezoning. But what was significant there is, it was the only rezoning like that on Woodward that was also adjacent, immediately adjacent to residential. So...
Yeah, we have residential on Parent and on Lafayette.
Councilman Harrison?
So this picture here shows nice flower beds and that kind of thing. And if you could just address one of the concerns that came out of the audience earlier tonight, is, you know, storage facilities, and I've seen these too, where initially they look really good, and then maybe two, three, five years down the line, they don't look so good. So what is your maintenance plan to try to make sure the yard looks...
Well, I can tell you, yeah, if you, well, we've, in our package that we sent you all, but I'm just saying, we regularly win beautification awards from communities. And we just recently received from Farmington Hills, from their Chamber of Commerce, they pick one business a year out of the entire city to award for beautification for their building and landscaping, and they picked us. And that happens on a regular basis. We've been long, again, we have, you know, forty years of holding properties, and all over the country, we regularly do that. But we, you know, we plant seasonal color at all our properties. We pay a big attention to landscaping.
Really, quite frankly, it's part of our marketing plan. We think it makes good business, and it's attractive, and it attracts people's attention to the location. So that's why we put the money in the landscaping and maintaining it.
Right.
And from my old city attorney hat here, it's also a contract that requires that maintenance to happen, so easy to enforce.
Right. And we will, and we'll work, if we move forward, we'll work with neighbors on all sides of us to see what we can do to even... on all sides of us to see what we can do to even expand our, our landscaping. I've, I've already had the conversation with the theater people that, because they've got some area there that they, it's a pain for them to maintain, and we're more than happy to, to plant landscaping there and, and help them maintain that.
Questions from council? Councilman Harrison.
This might be the last one, I bet. Maybe not though. So we have had a, a lot of marijuana grow operations in the city of Troy and, and I don't think the electric in your facilities is probably going to be something that would invite that kind of thing, but what assurances can you give us that that's not going to happen regardless of what Michigan State law?
We actually, not for that reason, but we've designed it, our older facilities used to have a, you know, porcelain fixture in the, you know, in the, uh, units. Now we just, we've lowered the partitions a little bit, so we have hallway lights going in there so that there's no power to the units, is what I'm saying.
Right, and we, and our, and our managers, because they are watch, they do, they're trained to watch what people are bringing in and what they're doing. If they, if they notice a strange pattern, they're going to be the first ones to call the police. Because that's, that's not anything we want in our operations.
Questions from council?
One final question, this is a five million dollar investment in the city of Troy?
Yes.
Minimally. Would you invest in the city of Troy if you didn't think you were getting a return on your dollar?
No.
No?
No, we wouldn't.
Absolutely not. And I could, and I can just tell you from, from our history, every one of our properties are, are up, running and, and, and I don't know where we're here, you know, occupancy rates, I know what ours are and they're not, they're not bad.
And I, and I literally have to personally guarantee everything on the loan, so I do stand behind the product.
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening that hasn't spoken? Mayor Jim Essien from Royal Oak. Once a mayor, always a mayor.
Always, I'll be a mayor forever. Mayor Slater, council, administration, thank you for the opportunity. As the mayor said, I am Jim Allison, I'm a former mayor of the city of Royal Oak, I was mayor of Royal Oak for thirteen years. I was also a member of the planning commission for sixteen years, now a member of the state house. But I'm here to speak that, on your particular project tonight, I don't have an opinion on your project. It would be presumptuous of me to have an opinion on your project. What I'm here to talk about is the steps that we went through when Easy Storage and the Nolan Brothers came in, um, to, to build their building in our city. We had a particularly challenging site. It was a site that used to have a Burger King restaurant on it that remained vacant and dilapidated for upwards of five years. The prod, the property was very hard to market because as they said, it, it was right in front of where the, um, the Woodward underpass is, under 696, so that anybody driving past was going to be past this particular site before they'd see any signage or any, any kind of, so it did not have any street draw. It needed to be a destination location. Easy Storage approached us about putting one of their storage units on this site. And to be perfectly honest, we had the same reaction as a lot of people in this room. We did not want a storage unit on that site. However, the more we talked to them and the more we got them into the process of, of the planning commission, and we found them very easy to work with and very accommodating to some of our insistence that we have. They, uh, designed the building, since it was fronting on Woodward Avenue, it was a triangle-shaped piece of property, so we had, the furniture on Woodward Avenue was the longest. We had, uh, projection back into the neighborhood on the other two sides of the triangle that were all residential. And again, just side streets, not, not busy streets. Since it was fronting on Woodward, we asked them to try to design the building to make it look, I got you, to make it look as much like an office building as, as it could. So they provided, um, a spandau windows or, or, or faux windows to make it look more presentable. Our building is forty-eight feet tall. It is four stories and we have very minimal setbacks. So the neighbors all came up with concerns, they were worried about, uh, a shadow intrusion, they were worried about traffic. And I'll try to wrap this up quickly. We like the inside loading and unloading because there's no outside storage in the facility at all. The landscaping looks as good today as it did the day they planted it. And being a user of storage facilities myself, I could be using this, it's only half mile from my home, but I use the one that's only three blocks away. And I use it for seasonal storage of my materials. I go in there a couple, three times a year just to switch out, bring my bikes out, put the bikes back, that kind of stuff. So the bulk of the use of these facilities is the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item this evening? Please come forward, give us your name, please.
Hi, my name's Eric Dietz, another resident that lives about two hundred feet behind this facility that's being proposed. You know, I, I, I guess I hope that you listen to a lot of the comments and concerns that we have as a, as a group, um, those of us that live nearby. I, I love the fact that, that there's investment coming in Troy, I think it's fantastic. I just think it's the wrong location. It's, it's just a, too big of a par, too big of a building that's going into this parcel. I happen to be in the financing business from a commercial standpoint. A lot of these types of properties in my world fall into what we call a higher risk category. So these facilities tend to be single purpose, so they're hard to repurpose, this type of property. If you guys are familiar with this site, there's been a long history with the retail on this site too, so I love the fact that we could turn this into retail and, and I think that's a nice component, but I worry about the ar, you know, the, the large parcel that's going to be behind, not parcel, but the actual building that's going to be behind. So, um, you know, we, we had a wonderful restaurant and T-Birds there for many years that many of us liked, um, you know, ice cream. I think there's just so many better things that we could use that parcel for, and this just doesn't seem to be the right, the right one. I, I, I know there's other parcels in Troy, there's got to be other parcels in Troy that will fit this facility. They can be happy, we all can be happy, and we can generate the revenue that, that we want from this type of facility. So please take in consideration that those of us that live nearby and the fact that there's a lot of risk to this facility and single purpose, I guess, the, the point that I wanted to make, um, if it doesn't work, and I know there's personal guarantees on the line, which, which kind of leads to the fact that there is a lot of risk to these types of facilities. You know, we, we have a, you know, the, the worst case scenario is the Silverdome, and I know that's an extreme, that nobody wants to hear that type of facility, but they're hard to reuse and they're hard to repurpose and it's something that, you know, we in Troy here can, can exercise and use, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item this evening? Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Council.
Good evening. My candidacy, I live on Hedwood, uh, just behind where this is going. And I know this, uh, the, um, your staff has done an excellent job in, in, in vetting this, but one thing I didn't hear, talked about, and, and maybe they have, is the environmental impacts. You know, recently we just went through a rain event where we had a few inches or more of rain over a few day period. And with this taking up, you know, a hundred thousand, a hundred, ten thousand square feet, um, and this property being right now mainly a wooded area, uh, my concerns are, where's that, all that water going? And where's all that water going to go in the future? The little bit of property that's behind it, I don't think the water's going there. If it did, it would very much overwhelm it. So I have great concerns about that and where that's going. And, and, you know, of course, all the oils and everything else that gets generated from the vehicle traffic and everything else, it would be a, a very part of that. So, you know, being that you guys are, are starting to look at the environmental impacts of, of our city and, and things like that, I think that's something that we should also take into account as we, as we look at that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just would like to make one quick comment. The mayor from Royal Oak indicated that he, their proposal and the facility showed up very positively in Royal Oak. But the difference between our, our concerns and his is he went from commercial to industrial. We're going to go from residential to commercial. They don't match, those two.
Thank you.
My name is Laurie Goodman. I, we live in Harrington Park. I want three points. Number one, that, that property can be used for condominiums. You build four hundred thousand dollars units there, twelve of them, you got your five million dollars back. So getting five million from them is, number two, you make that commercial, what's going to happen to the theater area? That's going to be next in line for commercial. And you're just going to spread it right down the road. Number three, we're going to have to get up every day and go out of our driveway and look at that monstrosity. They're going to go back to Texas. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item this evening? Now I will close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution. Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move H1 conditional rezoning application, uh, as printed.
Support. By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve H1, which is a conditional rezoning application, as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Pennington was first.
Thank you, Mayor. After driving by this property for probably fifty years, uh, I never stopped there before, so I, I stopped and looked at this parcel. And it is a, a nice piece of land. It, uh, from getting out and looking at it, there, there is no two-story building, two-story business is, when you look in either direction as far as the eye can see, much less a three-story building. We had, had a few emails about crime and, uh, you know, suspicious business being in storage centers, and so I didn't see, uh, Councilman Henderson's email today with Chief because I was working. But, uh, I called Chief and we talked about it and he, again, uh, told me about the light, he categorized it as light crime, um, being in, uh, possibility for a storage center. My, I probably have a bad opinion with storage centers because my only, um, interaction with the storage center was when a customer, it's a quick story, but a customer called me, this is probably twenty-five years ago, and said his Corvette had been totaled. And it was at a storage facility in Roy, in Royal Oak, as a matter of fact, and would I come take a look at it to, to buy parts? And we, we buy parts all the time, especially if somebody has a good VIN number. And so I went down there, looked at it and he had, it was not totaled, it was only totaled because he had reported the car stolen. So he'd, he'd reported the car stolen, he was selling parts off the car. Needless to say, I couldn't get out of there quick enough, but that was my only experience with the storage facility. So I'm probably not the best, um, to be asking about them. Planning commission was not in unanimous support of this, uh, of this item. It is a rural, rural-esque area that I think housing would be a better fit and, uh, with the possible crime and safety issue, and mostly it just doesn't fit. I just don't think it fits the area, so I would not be supporting the project.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson.
Can we have the petitioner address the drainage? I'm sure you've talked about drainage and, and, or Brent? Just so we have all questions answered, right?
Sure. The, uh, the, the park area in the back, that's been designed, it's got underground detention, it's not, it's not designed as a, as an above-ground retention pond, but it's actually going to be, it's a scientific design, it's been calculated. I mean, it, we have to keep all our stormwater on our property, we can't discharge. And right now, as I understand it, the grade on that property drains everything kind of off of it to the, to the adjoining properties. That will be, that will be taken care of with our, with our engineering and, and storm drain plant. But, and then we do have the, we do have a, a rain garden that will be filtering any of those things before it goes into the underground storage. And then it gets discharged down.
Thanks.
Comments by council? Councilman Baker.
I, um, came here tonight with a very open mind on this, received a lot of emails from a lot of you, it's nice to see faces with those email addresses. I, I say it, I said it last time we had, uh, conditional rezoning, but citizen engagement's really important and I really appreciate hearing from all of you and having your involvement, uh, coming here to City Hall emailing us. And I say this a lot too, but often we make decisions kind of in a vacuum and only hear about it after the fact. So it is nice to have people's opinions before, most of the time I'll say, most opinions. I will also say, you know, I, other than Mayor Allison or Representative Allison, nobody spoke in support of this project. And I, I don't know why that is. I know that people tend to come out and they're vote, or they, they're more passionate to say no to something and I, and I understand that, but, uh, it goes to my point of, I, I hear a lot from people in the city of Troy that we need certain kind of housing, we need senior housing, um, we need trails and pathways, we need all kinds of things, but no one's ever said to me, we need more storage facilities. And I, I think your storage facilities are great. I mean, from what you've shown, it's well-designed and, um, I, I believe that the security is important to you and I believe that you take good care of your properties. But at a certain point, I think it's up to us as council members who are responsible to the people of the city to look at what the city needs and what the, the residents are looking for. And I, I go back to the neighborhood node question I asked Director Savadon. And I don't think that it, this particular project caters to local needs and regional traffic the way our neighborhood node rezoning is, um, in the master plan is expected to be used. I do believe that storage facilities draw from the local areas, that makes sense, but I looked at the, the master plan and I pulled up some pages and in the bullet points under neighborhood nodes in the economic neighborhood, it's, you know, two of the bullet points are provide neighborhood gathering places and accommodate the daily needs of residents. And I think if you look at Ace Hardware, you have that. If you look at Kim's Chinese, the bank, the gas station, the grocery store, all of those are neighborhood gathering places and accommodate the daily needs of residents. But I, I don't think a storage facility with minimal retail, for a good reason why it's minimal, I understand that as well, is necessarily what our master plan is set out to accomplish. And maybe that's an issue with our master plan. I think other people will say they support the master plan and this goes with the master plan, but if that's the case, then maybe we do need to look at that again or at least try to confirm what it is we're trying to do with these neighborhood nodes. But I, I just, again, I, I got on council, I ran to be on council because I wanted more development in the city of Troy, more forward-thinking development to keep our city active and vibrant and growing and moving forward. And I, you know, the last conditional rezoning came up was another development project and I voted against that. And here I find myself tending to want to vote against this one as well. And I, I think it's important that while developing our city is, I think, a goal of all of us, we, we really need to focus on what kind of development we want to have here. I think the residents of our city demand that and deserve that, and it's up to us to provide that kind of development and support projects that we think are fit with the neighborhoods and what the residents want. So I, most likely will be voting no unless something really comes and changes my opinion.
Councilman Henderson.
So you guys all think this is really, really easy for us to sit up here and try to figure out what's best for a, for a neighborhood or a community? And I'm all for property, property owner rights, I'm a property owner, you're a property owner, so is the developer, the developer's a property owner. And so we have to, we, we struggle up here trying to figure out, you know, is this a great project, is it not a great project? And, you know, I, I grapple with the, the thought of that because who are we to say, you know, what's going to be best for this, excuse me, particular developer? Yeah, we'd all like to see a, a couple of restaurants there or maybe some housing. You know, we all, I'm a Realtor, okay, I, I know that there's zero housing right now. Somebody wants to move into Troy, we just can't find them anything. So yeah, I would love to see, uh, some housing go there, but that's not the project that's in front of us. The project that's in front of us is a storage facility. And it's a great-looking project and they've given us a, a ton of assurances. It fits, it checkmarks all the boxes for me. It, it's legal in every way, shape and form. It, it's not, it's not going to be criminal-ridden. The height may be an issue, but again, I, you know, I ask the question, you know, what are the, heck, the condos across the street are twenty-five feet high and I think the maximum, as I heard tonight, was thirty feet. And these are going to be thirty-four and thirty-eight feet on the, on the highest peak, so there's not that big a difference in height. So height is not a consideration for me. Traffic, I don't think traffic is going to be a big problem as, as these folks suggested. People are going to come- People are going to come and drop their stuff off. It's not like you're going to have, you know, consistent traffic going in and out of the parking lot. You know, maybe at times you might have, but by and large, people are going to drop their stuff and disappear for longer periods of time. So, I, my, again, I, I feel for a lot of things. I drove the entire lot. I saw the separation behind the south side of the property is a street. So, the neighbors on that side of the street don't necessarily abut the property. The neighbors on the east side abut the property, that's commercial. The neighbors on the west side abut the property, that's, again, arguably, commercial. And then to the north side is a, is a large thoroughfare that can, that can handle this type of appearance. So, again, my tendency, and I apologize for, for, you know, trying to defend other people's property rights if I have to, but my tendency is to be in favor of this, this type of development.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abraham.
I had the opportunity yesterday to go visit the Easy Storage on Royal Oak. And it's very attractive on approach, and then you get there, and it's extremely well-maintained. Landscaping's beautiful. I can see why you won the award in Farmington Hills. I thank you for that. Certainly, it's more attractive than the property off of Long Lake at the current moment. So, I think in terms of the quality of the design, I think you have some very high standards. So, in my decision-making, I look to the definition of what a neighborhood node is, much like Councilman Baker did. And when you look at the definition of neighborhood nodes, it says these destinations are created as go-to places that take on a social role, serving both as a place to meet basic needs of the community and as the 21st century village centers. And I struggle to see how this particular development will do that when less than 5% of the facility will be retail of some sort. I appreciate that you put time and effort and care into the parks, and maybe that's another 5%, but the vast majority of this development doesn't meet, to me, the intent of what that neighborhood node is. I also think by virtue of it being a three-story building, when everything else around it is being a one-story building, I see that, that the adjacent neighborhoods, there's a compatibility issue there as well. So, again, it's a, it's a beautiful design, it's a beautiful project, I just don't think it fits on that piece of land. I know the Planning Commission overwhelmingly supported it, seven to one. The planning staff did as well. And that's why we have city council, right? We make the decisions on what fits best for that neighborhood. And it's perfectly permissible to vote against it. We had something that came to council a little bit before my time, where Tucker Street, the barricade there and other places in the city, the recommendation was to take them down. And council decided not to go with that recommendation. So, I appreciate the effort that Planning Commission and planning staff put into this. I can see their viewpoint, I just see it a little bit differently. And that's why we have council with seven different viewpoints to look and make a decision. So, I will be voting no on this project.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hoderek.
I mentioned earlier that I'm very familiar and live and travel and bike ride and walk that area. So, there's a feel and a look, tone, a tenor to it that I'm taking into careful consideration. Councilman Baker mentioned, you know, we had people coming from the direct neighborhood speaking. I live west, and I've been bombarded with people speaking to me about this. And they're not even in the neighborhood right adjacent, but they can't see this fitting. That said, I did drive by your Royal Oak facility. I get it. It is beautiful. I get how that worked so well there. I love this plan. It's the wrong spot for, for it. This is the second time, the last meeting, I'm going through the same thing, and it's painful. I'm going to become a negative Nellie of development, and there's going to be this perception, and I'm, I'm not. I'm so excited about a lot of what we have going on here. But the petition to support thoughtful development in Troy, I'm saying this out loud so that people understand the conversation, you know, you have, and you're in Kroger trying to pick up eggs or take a walk. This place is really a beautiful city. And it's, the residential aspect of it is amazing. Saturday, I was driving all over the place. We have to do that new siding on our house. And it took me into corners and neighborhoods I'd never been in because, you know, you're looking for siding. By the way, the condo siding is beautiful. And it reminded me how each of our neighborhoods and our areas are these nodes. They're like little villages within our city. There is a village at Long Lake in Liverny that you don't know and understand just, just on its face. When you live there and you live in the area, there's a sense of place that I'm elected to try to protect. I don't doubt the safety aspects that you're committing to. That's not what's causing me to pause. But by golly, this place is beautiful. And I think we have every right, when a conditional rezoning comes, to be extremely vigilant about looking at our master plan in terms of what we're doing for our neighborhoods. And, you know, specifically on the zoning ordinance, it is number five that this disconnects with me on. And it disconnects bigly. Because I know the look and feel. And that's, it's not to say that I don't think Planning Commission is doing its job. It is. This happens through these processes in cities. Our planning staff and our city staff are looking at this and working, and we call on them to work with developers and really try to help, and I applaud you for that. But we're not a rubber-stamping body. And we are required to be extremely thoughtful and really give, you know, it's a zoomed-out lens of that zoning ordinance. It's exhausting and tiring. It's not, it's very exhausting. And it is that balance between the residential needs and the developer and the private property that they own and these huge investments they've made in their homes there are just something I take into consideration. And when I look at number five, I was struggling with whether it was the number three that was causing my disconnect or five. It was number five. I, I have to, I have to vote no. And this is hard. I'm hoping we don't have any more of these coming for a while. This is hard. And I, I want to echo your comments that the residents have been thoughtful in their emails. We appreciate the decorum here tonight and your thoughtfulness and your willingness to partner with us. We discern through the fact and the evidence and the emotion. And we appreciate that you're here and the time you've taken to be involved.
Thank you. Councilman McCown.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, residents, for coming out tonight. I appreciate all of your commentary. I thought it was, a couple meetings ago, we had a fairly contentious, similar kind of proposal regarding a conditional rezoning, and I feel like tonight's one a little bit better than that. Thank you also, in part, to the developer for kind of participating in that helpful, helpful dialogue. I have four points on this. One, first and foremost, regards to the crime. There's been a lot of discussion about it. And I was a math major in college, so when the emails started coming in about the crime concerns, being a math geek, as it were, I looked into some of the statistics behind it, and I couldn't find any studies that controlled for existing crime rate within the city prior to a storage facility coming in. And from a statistical modeling perspective, I thought that was important. So, I'm not super concerned about the crime. But three other points. First, staff did recommend this, and I appreciate the hard work that went into it on their end. I know specifically, Brandon, I know your team well, they worked a lot on this, as well as other, other parts of city staff. No, I feel like there's something important to highlight, that we are not a rubber-stamping committee. I mean, there have been cases in the past, I think it was probably my second meeting last fall, with the medical transport, we went with Alliance Transport, which was against city's recommendation. But we're, we're a different body, and we, we think through our own thought processes. So, we don't always agree, and that's fine, as long as there's good justification for it. Second, I think someone up here asked about if there was a return on investment in Troy. And I think that's important to highlight. Troy, from a real estate, commercial, and residential, both, from a real estate perspective, is a hopping industry right now. As Councilman Henderson said, you know, it's hard to find a house in Troy. I know that personally, and I know my parents do as well. And it's, it's important to know that we are open for investment, but it has to be the right investment. And that's kind of a similar argument to what I made in the last conditional rezoning question. And it's a similar argument to what I'm going to make tonight, that we do welcome developments as long as they're in the right manner, to keep the right feel and the right vibe in this city. And finally, my, my biggest problem, so I spend some time in the zoning board of appeals, so I'm fairly intimately familiar with the zoning code. And the, as Mayor Protem Hoderek brought up, the fifth point is the part that I can't get over, the compatibility with adjacent land uses, is the biggest part to me from a textual perspective where this proposal can't work for me. So, those are my thoughts, that I just don't, don't feel like it meets that, that muster.
Councilman Harrison.
Yeah, so, we did receive a ton of emails, and we appreciate the communication. It's hard to keep up on them. Sometimes we try to respond to them all, sometimes we don't get to them. We all have full-time jobs, so we try to, to the best of our ability, reach out and get with people that show some concern. And again, thank you for coming to the meeting and expressing your concerns. But I want to address the overall picture in Troy right now, because we don't have a lot of, a lot of vacant properties in Troy. And what, what we're seeing now, and we get emails continuously about this, the school district's selling off parcels, and they're being developed into housing. We get pushback on that. We, we had the McClure project last week, we get pushback on that. We have this project, we get pushback on that. So, it doesn't matter what we, what we go into for a development or a project, we're going to get neighborhood pushback. We understand that. That's, that is just part of the territory. But keep this in mind, the condos that some of you live in, that area had to be rezoned in order to build your condos there. And I reached out to the, to the planning department and talked to them a little bit before this meeting to kind of get a feel for what that meeting looked like. And there was neighborhood pushback, because that was zoned R1B, and we were putting attached condos there. And the neighbors didn't like it. So, they came out and they, they talked to those, those people at the Planning Commission at that time. So, we were, we're always going to come up with some neighborhood pushback on all these projects. We have to try to make the best decisions we can. And some of the emails I got, a couple of them had alluded to the fact that, you know, what developers got their hands in our pockets or vice versa. And, you know, I take offense to that because, you know, we just, none of us do that for this, or do this for that. We're not involved with developers. We're here to represent you as, as a community, to try to make our city a better city. And unfortunately, the economy turned with a vengeance, and we have developers clamoring to do business in Troy and to develop things. And we don't have a lot of property left. So, what we do have left, in fact, we just made a cluster ordinance a few months ago to try to take some of these difficult properties and make something of it, so they don't just sit vacant forever. So, again, I just, I just want you to understand, we, we don't sit up here with, with blind eyes and, and make decisions that are against or for any particular neighborhood. We have to weigh a lot of evidence and a lot of information to try to make these decisions. And sometimes they're easier than others.
Councilman Pennington.
I'll make it quick. I just want to clarify something that Councilman Henderson said. This, this issue and the issue of the apartments on McClure Drive, we receive hundreds of emails. And if you're expecting a reply from me, don't wait. Because I don't have the time to reply to all those emails. I run a small business that runs my life a lot of times, and, and I understand what Councilman Henderson does. But like he said, we do the best we can. We take the facts that are given to us. And we're all busy, but, you know, we, they, it's been asked of us to help out this city, and we do the best we can with the facts that are given to us, and we make the best decisions we can. But rest assured, we earn our $160 a month.
Any other comments from council?
Yeah, I, I try to be very consistent with the way that I vote. I try to set aside emotion, I try to set aside and look at the facts. And I've always supported the master plan. I will always support the master plan. I support recommendations from the city staff when they tell me that we fit all of the categories for a rezoning or special use, as in this case. That is a strong point for me. I look at the Planning Commission. They are, in my opinion, the vetting process for me. And when the Planning Commission votes unanimously, or seven to one, that is a strong vote for me. I am not an expert in these areas. I rely on staff, Planning Commission, the law, to guide me in my decisions. So, having said that, once again, this is the second meeting in a row that I can count. And having said that, I think there's an obligation to this council, that they need to go to the Planning Commission and tell them what they want. Because the Planning Commission, I believe, is doing what we asked them to do two years ago. And I think at this point, they're probably confused. So, having said that, I have the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Councilmember Baker?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
No.
Councilmember McCown?
No.
Councilmember Pennington?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. The motion fails. And thank you for coming this evening. We're going to take a short break and continue this in about five minutes. Thank you.
Back in session. Next on the agenda is regular business. I won board and committee appointments. I have two mayoral appointments to move. Would like to move Mary Kirwin and Rosemary Karnacki for the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the terms that expire 4/30/2020.
Support.
By the chair, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we appoint Mary Kirwin, Rosemary Karnacki, to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the terms that expire 4/30/2020. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you to Mary and Rosemary for volunteering for that position. That concludes the mayoral appointments. I will now turn the podium over to Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick for city council appointments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm moving tonight the appointments of four individuals, two of them to the personnel board, Deborah Bowman, and Michael Rosenberg, both for the terms expiring 4/30/2020. And for the zoning board of appeals, Dave Lambert and Albert Allen Neal for the term expiring 4/30/2020.
Support.
By Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we appoint Deborah Bowman, Michael Rosenberg to the personnel board for the terms that expire 4/30/2020, and Albert Neal and Dave Lambert to the zoning board of appeals for the terms that expire 4/30/2020. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Lambert? Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. I two, board and committee nominations. My understanding is that there will not be any nominations moved this evening by the mayor or city council. Is that correct?
Correct.
There is no post-session request tonight for I three, so we will move to I four, approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, B.R.A. proposal fiscal year 2017, 18, and three-year budget. Mark Miller, Director of Economic and Community Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority did recommend approval of the three-year budget. I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Miller from council? Thank you. Would you like to move that resolution? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move I four, approval of the Troy Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, proposed fiscal year 2017 and 18, and three-year budget.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman McCollin, that we approve I four as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. I five is the approval of the Joint Local Development Finance Authority, Troy Subcommittee Proposed Fiscal Year 2017, 18, and Three-Year Budget. Mr. Miller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, the LDFA did recommend approval of this three-year budget. And just really quickly, this provides 60% of the tax capture, provides operational support of automation alley, and this year's budget does include an allocation for the move across Troy pedestrian crossing and the automation alley, smart zone. Really quickly, in an upcoming meeting, we have in hand the MEDC extension agreement for the smart zone. That will be coming to you in the near future.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Miller? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move I five, approval of the Joint Local Development Finance Authority, Troy Subcommittee Proposed Fiscal Year 2017 and 18, and Three-Year Budget as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick, that we approve I five as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion further? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. I six is the approval of the Troy Downtown Development Authority's proposed fiscal year 2017, 18, and Three-Year Budget. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, the Downtown Development Authority did recommend approval of this three-year budget, and what's noteworthy is the 2013 Plan Amendments, which continue to pay off the bonds for the roads, is working, and we have sufficient funds for maintenance and administrative costs. It's working very positively.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Miller? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move I six, approval of Detroit Downtown Development Authority's proposed fiscal year 2017, 18, and Three-Year Budget as printed.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilwoman Abraham, that we approve I six as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Motion passes. I seven is the amendment to Chapter 20, water and sanitary sewer rates of the Troy City Code. Mr. Darling?
Thank you, Mayor. City council, what you have in front of you is a recommendation to adopt a new water and sewer rates in the Chapter 20 of the city code, as discussed and reflected during our budget study sessions. The increase represents about a 3.3% increase to help offset the costs associated with the water that we buy from Great Lakes Water Authority, and our sewer, sanitary sewer services from the Oakland County Water Resource Commission, which went up about 6.6%.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Darling? Councilman Henderson.
I'd like to move I seven, amendment to Chapter 20, water and sanitary sewer rates of the Troy City Code as printed.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Harrison, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve I seven as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I eight is the proposed, restated and amended agreement to the Troy Family Days. City Attorney Hloe Blum will make an introduction.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I'm not going to go into too many of the details, because it is in the packet, but this is the 2014 contract for the Troy Days Festival, and Northwood Board Community Foundation has asked for some relief from the payment that was required for the use of the property. It was previous, it is now a $10,000 payment. You have granted relief for the 2015 and 16 years through resolutions, and directed city administration to negotiate more of a partnership arrangement. So this does modify Sections 3 and Section 14. The new reimbursement fee, it waives all fees initially, but if there is a profitable year, which is a year which nets more than $25,000, then there will be a $10,000 payment for that year. If it's not a profitable year, they have the opportunity to come and ask you for some financial assistance through the budget process. Also, there is a change to Section 14, the fireworks permit. There is a waiver of that administrative fee as well. And happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for City Attorney Blum? Councilman Baker?
Just quickly, I mean, they're not here this evening, or they are here this evening, but the foundation is supportive of these amendments, of these changes, and they're, I mean, that's my main question. Just want to make sure. It's two-sided.
We did hear from them. We would not have put it on the agenda, but for having favorable, and there are some representatives as well from the committee, and they are in favor of it.
And they're clearly diehard by staying so late. So, thank you for staying so late after all that.
Questions? Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
I'd like to move I eight, proposed, restated, and amended agreement for Troy Family Days as printed.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick and supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve I eight as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for staying. Thanks for sticking around so long.
Mine, too.
Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull on a consent agenda item this evening? I'd like to pull J seven. Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on a consent agenda, with the exception of J seven.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda, with the exception of J seven, which shall be considered after the consent agenda items. Discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Reason I ask to pull J seven is I'm just somewhat confused about this, and I'd like
to get some clarification if I could. Reading this in the agenda packet, is it my understanding that these need to be approved every year? And I don't know if that's a question for staff or for City Attorney Blum.
Mayor?
Yes.
I can just indicate that this is something that we do recommend, and that we recommend that it be done with the budget process each year. By doing that, it provides education to all of the city council members that there are these purchasing cooperatives that are out there. Also, it does reaffirm, because there is a requirement for all persons who are present to be voting in favor of it, because it is really a bid waiver process. So it is our recommendation, after the P P E process, that this be brought to you just as a regular basis with the budget documents.
Thank you. That's what I thought, but I don't remember this being brought in front of us every year.
And if I may just clarify that, that is true, and there is some cleanup that needs to be done with that, and I think that's one of the reasons why we thought it was prudent to bring it to you on a yearly basis, and again, just to make sure that all the council members are aware of, that there are several cooperatives out there.
One of these cooperatives is from nineteen ninety-nine, and so since nineteen ninety-nine, we haven't had any council authorization to continue that since nineteen ninety-nine up until this year, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
City Manager Kishnik?
That's what I was going to say, the, what, in what City Attorney Blum was saying, that, that this is what came out of the P P E process that we did over the last, you know, six months of my continuous improvement plan, where we put the groups together, and it was determined that these were not being approved by the city council annually, and it's not required to be, is my understanding, approved by the city council annually. It's what you just said, nineteen ninety-nine, it was approved, my deal, like, for example, and then it's always been in effect. And so what we said was, this needs to come to the city council on an annual basis, and it makes sense to do it during the budget time, because it didn't seem right that something was out there since nineteen ninety-nine. And councils come and go, and people come and go, and you just see, you see it at the purchasing level in the memos, but it really doesn't have any connection to the overall program, is what's happening of cooperatives, the overall program of cooperatives, and why it's beneficial to the city.
Okay, since nineteen ninety-nine, has any council voted on this? This has to be unanimous, seven to zero every year that was voted on, and is that what's happened since nineteen ninety-nine?
Mayor, it's actually, just to clarify, it has to be unanimous for the persons that are present, so because all of you are present tonight, it does have to be a unanimous vote of seven and zero, seven to zero. But there have been several years where this has not happened. This is a new process that we are recommending for council to, again, just be aware, and so that it's demonstrated that there is an awareness of all of these cooperatives that are out there and are being utilized to save the resources of our purchasing department, and also to provide us with advantageous, you know, bids. When you're part of a cooperative, you get a more advantageous bid many times than what you would do if we were a single bid.
But to answer your question, we don't know, we would have to look into that, Mayor, to see if that's the process that's been followed ever since nineteen ninety-nine.
Well, I would like to see that personally, to see a report as to how this city council has voted since nineteen ninety-nine on these cooperative. And I've made it pretty well known that I've had issues with the cooperatives for the last year and a half, so I would like to see a report, and if I could get consensus from council, that, to see how this has been voted since nineteen ninety-nine by council. Councilman Harrison?
Can I ask one question about the seven oh vote? Is that written somewhere? Is that a policy? Is that a newly made policy?
No, it is not newly made policy, and in fact, I looked it up today, and it's been in our purchasing ordinance for many, many, many years. In fact, prior to nineteen ninety-nine, it has been required. And Mayor, it is true, we have not, I think that Ms. Mertz has done a report on when was the last time that you actually did vote on it. Some of them have not been voted on since nineteen ninety-nine, others have been more recent as two thousand and eight. So again, this is just a recommendation that we think makes sense and provides that awareness.
Oh, I would just like to see the report. I'm not so sure that in nineteen ninety-nine, that it was a seven oh vote.
No, it was not, Mayor, it was not. We've looked that up, and it was not.
So would that have voided that since nineteen ninety-nine? If it was not unanimous?
Again, there are votes that are taken to the council, so this is, again, a move to rectify that situation and to clarify, and if council decides that they want to utilize purchasing cooperatives, here's an opportunity for you to expressly state that. But that doesn't necessarily invalidate all of the resolutions that were purchased with the cooperative.
Councilman Harrison?
So this is a blanket authorization, meaning all nine? Or eight? My bifocals aren't working, eight or nine of these, if anybody on council wished to pull one of those, for example, just use my deal because of the, at the top, if all seven of them, or all the rest of the remaining cooperatives were approved seven to nothing, but my deal didn't, for example, we would not use my deal? That's not the case. So this is an all or nothing scenario, correct?
No, you absolutely can modify this if this is what you choose to do. If you're uncomfortable with any of these particular cooperatives, you certainly have the ability to modify your resolution by striking out any of them that you do not wish to participate in. And also, you do have an opportunity, it's not, even though you get the bids, you don't have to go with the cooperative. You do have some options.
If I may, we had several.
Councilman McCollin?
Thank you, Mayor. We had several examples in tonight's agenda where at least one was through a bid waiver, I can't remember which one it was, but it was a similar kind of thing, and if we had so chosen, we could have pulled that for discussion as well, and said that we don't want to go through that cooperative, right?
Correct.
That's all.
The reason I pulled this tonight is I'm not comfortable with it. I thought it probably should be a regular business item and been discussed in regular business, and I'm not sure I'm still comfortable with it to vote on it at this point. Mayor Protem Hoderek?
What is your discomfort?
I'd like to know how this was voted on in the past years.
And how would that affect, I mean, does that affect our go-forward approach?
It may be for me.
I guess I'm unclear, but.
I am, too, that's, that's why.
I'm unclear about the confusion. I, we have a very lean purchasing staff, and the cooperatives allow another approach for gaining as many options as we can. You know, I don't mind learning what the history of the voting was, but, and I suppose we could delay this to another meeting, perhaps it's late, my brain's just not working, but I guess I don't have a concern with using cooperatives, because even if we approve this going forward, anytime something comes up on the agenda, we can ask to look at that or revisit a purchasing recommendation from that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilman Baker?
I'm, well, two points, one, well, actually, no, just one point. I think we have a strong precedent on this council, if one of us is looking for more information on something for whatever reason, and it's a reasonable request that we should stand by that, I mean, I see a lot of nodding heads, so I, I, I mean, I can't imagine why we wouldn't. If there's a potential for more information, so we can discuss it further, look at it with fresher eyes, and have a better understanding, I think that's what we should be doing.
Yeah.
If I vote no tonight, then we don't do any of these cooperatives, is that correct?
That is correct.
Councilwoman Abraham?
If I remember correctly, Ms. Mertz gave a special presentation not too long ago, but probably within the past couple, three months. I'm not sure if anything's changed since then, I don't recall there being any questions or concerns raised at that time. May I ask if something's changed that's driving this concern, or did, has the concern been there for a while?
When I read this this weekend, I had some questions that I need some, before I vote on this, that I need to have answered. I'd be happy to vote tonight, but I'm going to vote no, if that's what, if that's what the council wants to do, if they want to call a vote.
I make a motion that we delay till you get whatever information it is that you need to make sure you have.
I want a historical vote on council since nineteen ninety-nine on these cooperatives.
Mayor, I just, just for clarification, just so that I know exactly what it is, and of course, I'm not going to be doing the work, but others will be, but are you looking for just the resolution approving the cooperative, or are you looking for each and every purchase that was done as a result of these cooperatives in the vote?
No, I'm looking for the vote from council.
The vote from, on each one of the decisions to go with the cooperatives?
Yes. Is there consensus for that? I'll move to table J seven until the next council meeting and wait for the report.
Support.
Moved by the chair.
You have a motion on the table. Mayor Protem Hoderek actually moved the resolution.
She made a motion to postpone, but.
To postpone.
There wasn't a second for it.
There wasn't a second.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Hoderek, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we postpone J seven till when?
Till we have the information, I don't know how long it's going to take to, till the May twenty-second meeting?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Discussion? Vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda are memorandums and future council agenda items. K one is an announcement of public hearing for May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, a reprogramming community development block grant, C D V G program for two thousand fifteen funds. Next on the agenda is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't know if Mr. Chappelli is still here this evening? I don't blame him. There are no council referrals this evening, from, next is council comments, any comments from council? Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes, I just want to announce that the two thousand seventeen Troy School District Art Show will be held this year at the Troy Community Center. It started today, it goes through Sunday, May fourteenth, Monday through Friday. It says five AM to ten PM, that can't be right. I guess that's what it says on the flyer. And Saturday, I guess it does open the community center early, right? I just had a moment, because it's late. Saturday, seven AM to eight PM, Sunday, eight AM to six PM, and it sounds like that'll be a nice opportunity to be able to see the artwork displayed.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Two quick things, Happy Mother's Day to all the moms out there, including my own, for this Sunday, Mother's Day, for Mayor Protem Hoderek, who's, I think she's the only mother up here, well, at the council table, and also, well, and for.
We have other.
City clerk, and for the city attorney, as well, I was speaking specifically to council, but also to Councilman Henderson, not on Mother's Day, I don't want to steal any of his thunder, so maybe I'm blowing a big surprise, but it's his thirty-fifth wedding anniversary today with his beautiful wife, Kelly, and happy anniversary to both of you, and I'm sure she's at home watching and celebrating your anniversary. And if I just took some special announcement away from you, I apologize.
Council comments?
Thank you.
Any discussion on the reports this evening? Anybody want to talk about the Sylvan Glen Park Lake?
I know it's a research project that Kurt Bovenseep is still working on. He has more and more information daily.
He's diving in.
He's wading through.
See, Mr. Chappelli was here, I didn't know if he wanted to talk on that this evening or not, but did he speak to you, Kurt, at all? I mean, the letter indicates that he was somewhat satisfied with what's going on there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd be happy to report on Sylvan Glen Lake Project with Mr. Chappelli. Recently, as of tonight, he did drop off his proposal that I briefly went through, a lot of beautification opportunities at Sylvan Glen Park, but mostly, you know, the functionality of the park, he agrees that it is functioning well, but it just has opportunity to be something bigger. A lot of his proposals do suggest him doing the work and the city paying for him, so I will take that opportunity to educate him on how our bid process works at the city of Troy. Also, his proposal does have a large cost to it, so I also explained to Mr. Chappelli that this is something that would have to be budgeted in future years under our park development capital budget, and it would be vetted through our capital improvement process at staff level first, then if it goes through there, it would be introduced to city council in the budget session.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Hoderek?
You know, there was one other item that we had wanted to call out. On the consent agenda, we had J four, exercising the renewal option for the workman's compensation insurance renewal for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen, and essentially wanted to just highlight the good work of the safety committee. The city manager can probably articulate it better than I am, because I've lost the facts here late at night, but there's been some really good work there, and it's worthy of a moment of highlighting here.
Right, so it starts with the, a lot of it is the safety committee that Lynn Lambert in H R, we hired her maybe three years ago from recreation, and she handles that at the D P W with a staff of the D P W, actual workers, and then this D P W has a. the D P W with a staff of the D P W, actual workers, and then this D P W has a safety awards banquet at the end of the year, and they've done a great job in controlling the exposure, and she takes it very seriously, as do they at the D P W, so there's, on work injuries are reduced. Not to mention the, I don't know the good work that chief mayor's done, but we certainly are doing better in the police department as well, which is, those are our two large exposures. So, so it's chief mayor and H R, Lynn Lambert, who do a great job.
Awesome. The safety of the employees is paramount, and, you know, obviously, there's a dollar savings, but the physical safety of our people matters, and it's awesome that there's that kind of emphasis, so, thank you.
Are there comments on the reports this evening? Next for our comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, I'll call on Anthony Lewis, who wishes to speak this evening. Smart man, he left. Jim Ellison, I know he already spoke, so I'm going to assume that he's left also. There's no closed session request this evening, so thank you, we're adjourned.